Okay, so I'll call the meeting to order at whatever 4:33. Mrs. Black, you want to read community input?
She's back.
I'm back.
You need to read what?
Community input.
Okay. This is my on camera. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items on the closed session agenda only. Each speaker has three minutes to address the board and speakers may not cede unused time to other speakers. Per Board Policy 9323, there is a maximum of 20 minutes of comments per topic. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comments depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to speak. When addressing the board, it is helpful if you state your name and address for the video record.
Okay, great. I'm seeing no cards.
Wait, Mrs. Floor, do we need to take roll?
No, that comes afterwards, please. That goes at the regular meeting, sweetie.
No, actually, it doesn't.
I've got the agenda in front of me. What does the agenda say, Shar?
Number two is roll call and number three is community input on closed session items.
And what is number six? Call to order? Do you want to take roll now?
Well, I'm letting you know that Michelle, Ashley, and Fred are in line to get into the public meeting.
I see them. They're here. Ring in. And we have Rosie who is taking roll.
Yes, I can assist with roll call whenever you're ready.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Floor?
Here.
Ms. Yelsey?
Here.
Ms. Black?
Yes, here.
Barto?
Here.
Ms. Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Snell?
Here.
Ms. Metoyer?
Here.
And Dr. Navarro?
He's on mute.
Dr. Navarro is on mute right now.
Yeah, he's on mute.
Dr. Navarro?
I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going into closed session. We are going to be discussing public employee discipline dismissal release employment pursuant to government code section S4957 and education code section 44954B. And there will be no report out, correct, Mrs. Olson? Will there be a report out? You're on mute.
There'll be no report out. I know that.
There'll be no reporter. All right. So we're going to close this meeting and go into closed session.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So welcome, everybody, to the April 28th regular board meeting of the Newport Mesa Board of Education via teleconference. We are reconvening after closed session. There is no report out. And so I will call the call to order. I want to make a couple of comments prior to the adoption of the agenda. So bear with me while I get my comments up. Okay. I have three items that I'd like to propose and then we'll have a motion to adopt as amended. I'm adding to the agenda after item 12 and an opportunity for our associate presidents, association presidents, that would be CSEA Pam Saunders and Dr. Britt Doughty for NMFT to say a few words under three minutes regarding their association activities. Because we're in unusual circumstances and we haven't been able to recognize the very hard work that all our teachers and our classified staff have been doing under these extraordinary circumstances. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for us to hear from the front lines and so that's, I am doing that. I am also moving item 17A, which is the grading resolution, to the beginning of the meeting so that Mr. Russell Lee Sung will have a greater audience on this very important topic. And I wanted our student board members, our PTA leadership and others to have the opportunity to weigh in on this discussion. And they may have already left at the end of the meeting, so thank you. In addition, I am also pulling agenda item 17C, which is the Ensign fencing, at the request of board members and staff. We will bring this back once we have clarified some of the issues raised. However, the board will read into the record those comments regarding this item, so thank you. So with that being said, may I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
So move.
Second.
Okay, you know, I can't see all of you, so if you could just state your name.
Dana Black moved to approve the amended agenda.
Okay, and Michelle Barto, correct? Did you second it?
Second.
Oh, Ashley. Okay, Ashley, thank you. Okay, so it was moved by Mrs. Black and seconded by Ms. Anderson. Roll call, please.
Floor?
Yes.
Ms. Yelsey?
Yes.
Ms. Black?
Yes.
Barto?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Snell?
Yes.
Ms. Metoyer?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Item number eight is the adoption of the minutes of 3:31:20 and 4:14:20. May I have a motion?
Move adoption of the minutes. Metoyer?
Second, Yelsey.
Okay, Mrs. Metoyer made the motion and Mrs. Yelsey seconded. All in, roll call, please.
Floor?
Yes.
Ms. Yelsey?
Yes.
Ms. Black?
Yes.
Ms. Barto?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Snell?
Yes.
Ms. Metoyer?
Yes.
Great, thank you so much. I also have a couple of comments regarding community input. And we are at that point, at this point. Community input, this is, again, these are unusual circumstances. We can only get better. And so please hang in with us as we try and adjust to this meeting. For example, we have made some adjustments. This meeting has been expanded to allow for up to, I believe it's 500 individuals. Is that correct, Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
And so we have made that adjustment. But again, because this is all through Zoom, we have had to change our policy in terms of how we even take public comment. In the past, people came to the microphone, they had their three minutes, a light went on, the lights turned, and then there was a buzzer and we asked them to finish up and move on and call the next person. Because we're on Zoom, everyone has to submit their comments by one o'clock in the afternoon. And we discussed, I know staff discussed the procedures, how to do this. And we took a look at things and I know Sheri did some research on it and has discovered that the average individual can speak for three minutes and it's usually about 400, between 300 and 450 words. It's about a three-minute speech. And so that's how she came up with the 400-word maximum to allow for public comments. Yes, there were several individuals who submitted over 400, but the board will only read the first 400. However, I want to assure the public that all the comments are listed and the board will have a full record of all the comments in their entirety. There has been no editing of that and we will again reassess. But I want to assure everyone that this is only our second meeting via Zoom and we are continuing to make improvements. And so with that, Mrs. Black, would you read the public comments section?
Ms. Floor?
Yes.
Ashley has her hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ashley. I didn't see you.
Would it be possible if there are changes that are made to public comment if before, if the board can be informed about it? I know I didn't hear about it until several members of the public told me that there was a 400-word limit and that there was a Google form and it was very different. So if when there are changes that are made and the board can be alerted to that, that would be really helpful.
Great, thank you. Well, I believe that this is the same format that was used at the first meeting. So, okay. Any other further comments? Okay, Mrs. Black, would you read the public comments, please?
Sure. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board on items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Per Policy 9323, each individual speaker will have three minutes and speakers may not cede unused minutes to other speakers. And there is a maximum of 20 minutes of comments per topic. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comments depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to speak. The board, staff, or members of the public may request that a specific item on the consent be moved to discussion action. Requests to move consent items must be received prior to the time the consent, the board takes action on the consent calendar. All comments are recorded in full on the meeting video record. When addressing the board, it is helpful if you state your name and address for the video record.
And just for everybody's information, the board members will be reading all the comments. Again, they were submitted, so they're submitted by topic and then by timestamp. So all the comments. And each of our board members are going to go in alphabetical order and read one comment. And I believe, Ms. Anderson, you are the first person, so this is under community input. So, Ms. Anderson, you're first.
My first comment is from Charlene Ashendor. Dear President Floor and Newport Mesa Board of Trustees, thanking ahead for the benefit of our students, parents, and teachers. I would like to know what dates have been established for summer school for Newport Mesa Unified School District. In so much as these are times of uncertainty, summer less than eight weeks away, I am certain parents and students will want to make plans, if necessary, to make arrangements for summer school. Thank you.
Ms. Barto?
This comment is from Cynthia Blackwell. As a former educator, it was my experience that many times throughout the school year, students' contact information or parents' guardians would change. Are parents being notified via US mail about the new grading policy? Are calls being made in English and Spanish to alert families of all district policy changes? Have you been able to verify all students have internet access? Also, what plans are currently being made to address the 2021 school year curriculum?
Thank you. Ms. Black?
And the community member Kevin Thompson wrote, "I would like to express my strong belief of some sort of graduation for seniors. This is a major milestone in their life. I do not have a senior at CDM. He has, I have a 10th grader and a 9th grader. We will not be attending any graduations this year. I just feel it is something we as a community must do our best to allow the students to have their moment." There are many options we can preview and plans to set up. If we ignore the options, we will not have time to plan when the stay-at-home is lifted. It will be lifted at some point. Seniors and their parents only in attendance, outdoor on baseball fields or, and he has question marks after these statements, use of the gym with temperature scanners. The seniors gave up a lot this year. It is not fair that we can only say congratulations and move on. Maybe we move it to July or August. Just don't blindly cancel and move on. Look for an alternative.
Thank you. I have the next one. It's from Hayek Belmore. "I am a working mother with two jobs. I have a child in first grade. I simply cannot find the time to have my child attend daily Zoom meetings and help her complete all the assignments. This is unfair for certain families having to work during this time."
Okay. Mine is from Robert Hanley. "I wish to make it very clear that we are not in favor of voting to accept the original plan for Cliff Drive as forced upon us by Navarro. We strongly believe we should preserve the large trees and remove, if necessary, the city trees on school site. We find Navarro's my-plan-or-no-plan actions to definitely not reflect our community views on this proposed project and his comment that the city never offered to give or loan the school eight to 10 indentations to be, at the very least, disingenuous and deceitful. We vote and will continue to vote in the future of those candidates to preserve the integrity of our neighborhood." Robert Hanley.
Terrific. Ms. Snell?
My comments from Annie Adams. "Widening Cliff Drive to accommodate a better pickup-drop-off situation for the middle school makes sense. The proposed banana system doesn't. I am all about safety and if trees need to be removed to save the child from being injured or worse, I am all for it. So let's get this right. The proposed banana lot is puzzling. Did the group or person who came up with the idea spend any time watching how people currently pick up or drop off their kids? It really doesn't seem like it. I thank you for listening and hope you will consider the alternative plan before going forward."
My comment is from Britt Doughty, President of the Newport Mesa Federation of Teachers. "We are thankful to be in Newport Mesa with support of our community. We have many resources to support students that other districts do not. All of our teachers are working hard. Our support providers are working hard. Transitioning a new instruction model still has challenges. This is an uncertain time. Many are left having to figure out answers to questions never before asked. We are all very concerned about student access to the curriculum and student participation in all grade levels. There are still barriers to being able to reach every student every day to help them make progress in their education. Many of these barriers are beyond our district's control. Our members are dealing with a lot, just like all other members of our community. NMFT is encouraging our members to take care of their students and themselves on a personal level and to recognize the most important function is personal safety. We believe maintaining school dismissal through the end of the school year is the right course of action. We recognize this is an extreme disruption in the typical learning process. We are all trying to adapt to a system very different from our experience, training, and resources. Everyone has to recognize distance learning is not going to be perfect and we need to deeply consider our assumptions of what we expect students to be able to do from home and how we will measure their learning. I frequently check in with other union leaders across California. These same emotions are felt by all. There is a wide variety of success and struggle across the state. Newport Mesa is doing the best it can right now and we are doing a better job than many districts in California. We are still seeking answers from Sacramento and Washington DC on how to best serve our special education students. We are still advocating for the appropriate financial resources to support our at-risk students. CFT is still strongly supporting reforms to the funding models of our schools to help raise the bar for all students. The legislative activity in Sacramento has slowed down tremendously, which presents problems with these reform efforts. Also, you know that I am not running for reelection as president and want to return to the classroom while spending more time with my family. It has been an honor representing in our union for the past four years. Our process is in full swing and we hope to announce a new president and will take the helm in July. The announcement should come later this week."
Thank you, Britt. Ms. Anderson?
My question is from Elizabeth and there was no last name given. And it's questions about incomplete as outlined in the resolution being sent to the board for approval. What is the plan for seniors who receive an incomplete? Will they come back to school in the fall? Will they do the work in the summer? Who will grade the work if it's in the summer? If it is in the fall, will incomplete students be added to the teacher's caseload, which are already at 180?
Thank you. Ms. Barto?
Mine is from Tom. No last name given. What is being done to prepare for the very likely possibility that we will need to do distance learning again in the fall? Will the new early date of return be changed?
Great, thank you. Ms. Black?
Ms. Black, you're muted.
You're muted, Ms. Black.
I'm sorry. We have, somebody's having fun next door, so I, a little bit of joyful laughing, actually. It was nice to hear. Okay, so my community member is Wendy Lees. General comment, 1:00 PM is unfair to residents, taxpayers. It is difficult to find. Took me some time. Please announce how public comments can be made and accepted during meeting, just like the city council.
Great, thank you. Mine is from Betsy Fisher. Can anything be done to speed up the process for approval of textbooks so that if we need to do distance learning in the fall, the students will have textbooks and digital textbooks? Thank you. Ms. Metoyer?
Mine is from Kyle. No last name. What is the status of installing air conditioning at schools? Will it be safe to congregate in rooms with air conditioning and no fresh air? Does the air conditioning meet guidelines for keeping the classroom sanitary as far as airflow as outlined in the CDC guidelines? That's it.
Thank you. I believe we're moving on to community input, so now we will move on.
Floor, there are more.
They're all on items.
You're right, resolution. Well, what about all the ones from 17C? Shouldn't we be reading?
So we will, I think what we'll do is we'll go to the items that are marked 17C, which is on the fourth page, starting with Ms. Barfield, because we have pulled that item. So let's, if you could read those community inputs. Ms. Snell, you have the first one, which is from Nancy Barfield.
Okay. Okay, I am off. This is from Nancy Barfield. "I have sent an email to you regarding the plans that were drawn by the City of Newport Beach to revise your project on Cliff Drive at Ensign. The plan that the city proposed is so far superior to what your plan is for Cliff Drive. A banana drop-off with a curb cut will be dangerous, to say the least. The students walk along Cliff Drive and are on their phones or talking to their friends, not paying attention. The students will walk across the driveway without any thought to a car turning into the banana parking lot. If a car is making a left-hand turn into the banana and the students are crossing the driveway, then the driver tries to get into the driveway and there are cars that she pulled in front of. The driver may panic and try to get out of the way, getting hit herself. The parking lot will cause congestion and backup if just one car needs to back up and pull out of their space during drop-off and pickup. Both ideas are so dangerous. I know the flow of traffic every morning and afternoon. On the weekends, I am sure the parking lot will be used by the neighbors for their parties and gatherings. You will have beer bottles, wine bottles, bathing suits, towels, et cetera, almost every warm weekend. I also know there will be graffiti, as we have experienced a lot of graffiti at King's Road Park lately. You will have great access for the drop-off and pickup with the city proposal. Leave the trees alone. No parking. No banana."
Great.
The next one is from Dr. Leah Rosalou. "Thank you for conducting the thought exchange regarding the Ensign project. My comments below were simply my professional take on the data analysis and recommended actions conducted. I have only three minutes, so I will be succinct. I first want to commend Aris Restme from your staff as she was incredibly responsive to my questions about thought exchange and walked me through the methods so that I could make commentary appropriate to the process. She is so extremely helpful and transparent and I truly appreciate her as a wonderful public servant. It is an incredible feat to get 400 participants to complete a survey of any kind. You should be commended. Thank you, Aris. I found the analysis presented to be limited at best and misleading at worst. When I teach qualitative data, I like to tell my students that their data is only as meaningful as the interpretation. The document from NMUSD website leaves a reader with more questions and answers. One, to get the data you want, you have to ask the question you need. The key question in thought exchange was, what are your priorities about the proposed drop-off zone at Ensign? From the prior board meeting, it seemed that the board was committed to conducting two town halls regarding the project overall, not strictly concentrated on the drop-off zone. This being the only question already biased is the incoming thoughts in a particular direction from the get-go. The reporting out of the top 10 thoughts were simply different ways to say safety. That is, safety, kid's safety, safety of children, et cetera, et cetera. This could have been communicated by simply saying variations of safety were the highest priority. If a student handed me a tablet with 10 top 10 thoughts, I would expect to see some kind of analysis, not simply the actual raw data shown. 10 thoughts, which we already know are safety. This visual adds nothing to helping the community understand and process the data. Reporting of the themes chart shows the following 414 comments, broken down as such. 18% safety, 14% aesthetics, 58 to 60 are pro-trees grass area. Of note, there's an additional two pro-tee comments under safety, as well as two more pro-tree found under other themes. 13% traffic flow, of note. There are several other comments found under additional thoughts. 7% education and enforcement, of note. There are several other comments found under additional thoughts. 4% Irvine Gate, 2% single entry. The remaining 42% were either suggested modifications or additional thoughts. Of note, several of these, perhaps 40%, could have been correctly coded in the aforementioned six categories. This means that of the 414 comments people made, 74 of those comments were about safety. Now we look at how these numerical concerns of the respondents, which clearly show safety, 74, tree 60, traffic 54, as the items of concern got translated to the following priorities we see in the board agenda today. Safety, 74%, education and enforcement, 27%, Irvine Gate, 15%. That was the end of 500 words.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson? You're on mute.
My comment is from Judy Waitman. Her comment is, "Have you seen the Ensign alternative drop-off bananas zone design proposed by Mayor Will O'Neill February 27th and presented to your slash our superintendent? As city residents and neighbors, we just saw it. Don't you wonder why you were never given that information? What benefit did or does Navarro offer to ameliorate the negatives of the present suggested configuration, which kills the trees that make Ensign a good neighbor and, to me more importantly, brings noxious exhaust fumes right up to the doors and walkways and lockers of our children? Oh, and the last memo sent to the parents of the current students. I live across the street from our fabulous school and have never received any, not any, information regarding or requesting my input or informing of what was planned, except the nice posters firmly planted in front of the school. How are you representing the citizens of your city if you do not receive input from all those affected? You need to stop the banana drop-off tonight and rethink it. The city of Newport Beach is willing to work with you. Please represent me, a resident of our city, and not Navarro, who keeps things from you. Please."
Thank you. I have from Phil Stemler. "For working parents with a kindergartner, being ordered to return to work while the schools remain closed is a nightmare scenario. Disabling work and the homeschooling is already a huge burden in this impoverished economy. For my wife and I, being responsible for educating our son, is also a scary responsibility that we feel unqualified for. I can imagine we are not alone in feeling this way. In our view, the early April decision to close school was aggressively early to cancel for the year. Now, in the latest email from the district, there is talk that next fall is on the chopping block. This is highly concerning. Is there anything about a shortfall of cancellation that can be done? I've already been ordered back to the office in mid-May and my wife is in a similar boat. This homeschooling situation, already tough enough with both of the, that the house, is about to get real extremely difficult and the prospect of next fall being canceled is unimaginable. Is the district considering other options beside the one-size-fits-all? One instrument full closure if we are in continued emergency status? What about a more targeted approach involving staff?" What about a more targeted approach involving staggered school times? Distance learning for older kids, new high school only, night school, reduced hours, elementary school, et cetera? Is there any thought to providing limited hours? Summer makeup, school for elementary students like ours, who had three months of school canceled? We ask the district give consideration to the needs of parents during this time. Importantly, working family, parents who rely on school care and, and education. If we are being sent back to work, we would hope that the schools would be finding a way to reboot too. FYI, I sent an email on this topic to Martha Flor yesterday, but did not receive. Did not receive a response. So I opted to submit this comment. Thanks. Ms. Matoye, you're next.
There were two that were missed.
Yes.
On my page. And I didn't see the one that you just read, but I'll. Mine is from Mrs. Leece, but there was two that were skipped on the same page. Because I thought, I thought we were just reading the seventeen C.
Yeah, seventeen C.
Yeah, there were three left, four, four left on seventeen C.
Yeah. The last page.
The last page.
Yeah, yeah. So do you want to start with Mrs. Barto, or do you want me to read mine, Mrs. Flor?
I want to read yours, Mrs. Flor, Mrs. Matoye. Yeah, I read seventeen A, which is the wrong one.
Okay, so I will, I will read mine, which is nice and short. It is from Wendy Leece. Regarding the Enson fence, do not pass unless public has been engaged. Residents, taxpayers are at a disadvantage during COVID-nineteen.
And then, back where I was, was from Logan Malouf. Regarding the security and fencing project at Enson Elementary, why is the drop-off lot on Cliff Drive still part of the plan? What purpose is it serving? Definitely not helping with fencing and having lived in the neighborhoods surrounding the school for twelve years. I've never seen or heard of any incident that would make this lot safer for anybody. Can somebody produce a report that clearly states that anyone has been seriously harmed on Cliff Drive in front of the school? If not, I strongly encourage the board to not approve any plan that includes this particular lot. It's not necessary. In addition, the board mandated staff to hold two community meetings to address this specific matter, and they haven't happened. How can the board approve plans when their mandates haven't been followed? There was a survey sent out, but it only went to the current Enson parent. The meetings were supposed to engage the community at large, including homeowners in the area. Nothing was sent to these people. Failure by staff to follow through on board directives to engage the community and wish to approve the plan anyway should be grounds for termination. The taxpayers who live in this Newport Beach do not want this lot. It's that simple.
Ms. Black, you're next.
So my community member is Kate Malouf, and respectfully, I request that the Board of Education table this agenda item. For a minimum of sixty days, so that the district can meet with residents and come to a mutual compromise. For Cliff Drive portion of this project. Board President Martha Flor publicly stated on February eleventh, two thousand twenty. That there would be two community meetings before the board would consider what action is appropriate to take. Contrary to this representation, there have been no meetings with regard to this issue, much less the solicitation. Of community and residents input. Please do not vote to approve this item as is. Thank you.
Great. I have the next one. It's from Jim Kostuba. Thirty years ago, Irvine Avenue and Cliff Drive were relatively quiet, and a student could safely cross either street after exiting a car. Today's traffic volumes have been made, have made the crossing guard a necessity. In the future, traffic volume increases should overwhelm the ability of the traffic crossing guard to provide student safety after drop-off. Area residents are facing for traffic volume surges on Irvine Avenue and Cliff Drive. Because the community is working to indefinitely stall or scrap plans that widen Coast Highway. And at the same time, the city of Newport Beach is encouraging the revitalization of Mariners Mile with large developments. Currently, city planners are reviewing a three hundred thousand square foot Newport Village project on Coast Highway. The banana lot drop-off zone proposed near Cliff Drive is a commonly used design implemented at many schools. Whereby streets experience high traffic volumes. This lot is required for student safety, since it separates student drop-offs from necessarily high traffic volumes on Irvine Avenue and Cliff Drive. The community has discussed, has discussed school safety for two years. The city of Newport Beach presented two school safety proposals that did not embrace the banana lot. Both proposals were soundly rejected by the community. Some suggested moving, resizing, or redrawing the banana lot to save the trees. However, experts pointed out that such banana lot changes would reduce student safety. Many ideas floated in thought exchange rely on the same strategies, strategies which have been tried for years. The fact is, the banana lot is the only drop-off zone option proposed by anybody. That effectively separates student pedestrian and vehicles. Every standard approach has been aired, and any new alternative would be experimental. It is time to vote yes on the banana lot, drop-off zone, because it appears more study and community meetings will fail to provide a viable alternative. I think that's, those are the comments on seventeen C. Is that correct, Ms. Matoye? Did I miss any? Didn't you keep in?
No, you got it. That was it. Thank you.
Okay, so moving on to item number ten. Dr. Navarro?
Yes, I did want to comment on some of the things I heard in the public comments. We don't have any dates yet for summer school, and a lot of that information will be driven by Task Four or the Committee. Of teachers and administrators are going to be working on addressing the incompletes for students in high school. So that will be in the works at some point. I can guarantee you that it's not going to be business as usual. And I appreciate the thoughts about graduation. I just want to let the public know that we have our principals and activities directors working together on possible plausible solutions. For all senior activities this year, as well as promotional activities for eighth graders. And so, we have yet to receive any, any recommendations, but perhaps during his informal report. Dr. Bauermeister can provide you with the more definitive recap of what's going on with, with that team. So we do have, we are working on a plan for the incompletes. It's going to be a group effort. We need to have our teachers and our school leaders involved in that, so we can make sure it's a doable process. The other thing is a question about the AC. I just wanted to remind the board that the AC projects are approved. They do bring outside air into the classrooms. That's partly to refresh it, but also to make sure that the oxygen flow is appropriate. Otherwise, if you don't get enough oxygen in the room, kids will get sleepy. So yes, there is a process for bringing in outside air. And it is going through all the filters that are necessary to make sure that air is appropriate for the classroom. And that the kids can operate at the highest level that they can biologically.
Great, thank you. Assistance, let's see, we're going on to student board members. And Ms. Snyder, you said we have, we have some substitutes here, so if you'd like to call them out. I think Carolyn Brewster is not here, but I think she has, she has a replacement, correct?
Yes, his name is Troy Saboda.
Okay, Troy, are you there? Perfect, great, Troy, how are you? Welcome.
Good, how are you?
That's great. If you'll make sure that you state your name and what school you're from.
Yes, my name is Troy Saboda. I am from Corona Del Mar High School, and I'm here subbing for Caroline Brewster. So just, just for some of the comments. So regarding distance learning, how we've been doing. Obviously, distance learning has caused students and teachers alike to have to really readjust the scheduling and, you know, our day-to-day. But, and I think the workload has almost increased a bit because of the less class time. Like some of that gets converted into like homework that we do, like when we normally have class. And I would say that the, the classes that students have the most success in would be those that the teacher like either gives a lecture through Zoom or gives us videos to watch. Where they lecture during those videos. For additional support, we have found that the Zoom office hours and really like very communicative teachers have really helped us in this whole process of transitioning to this distance learning format in general. So I think the teachers have been doing very well with all of this. In terms of graduation, the seniors definitely want an in-person graduation. And while we understand the, there's obviously a lot that goes into all of this, given the times we live in. We, we realize that, well, we think that virtual might not be the best fit, and some are even saying that they want to virtualize all. And we, we're willing to postpone graduation until the fall. Or until whenever, to have an in-person graduation whenever we are allowed to do so. And in the meantime, CDM is putting on a, or is creating a senior video to honor the class of twenty twenty.
Thank you. Okay, our next one is Catherine Pham from Costa Mesa High School. I don't know whether she's on.
She's not, she is not here, Mrs. Flor. It's Nikolai Downs.
Okay, Nikolai, great. Thank you for, everybody for stepping in. Okay, Nikolai, where are you? I know you're here.
Unfortunately, Catherine can't come to the meeting because she's at a SAT prep Zoom, so I'm here in her place. I'm Nikolai Downs, representing Costa Mesa High School. And without other way, good morning, President Flor, members of the board, Dr. Navarro, and distinguished guests. I'm a junior at Costa Mesa High School. And to gain student input on the questions you gave us, I created a Google Form survey. Which sixty-eight students responded to. In general, students have two trains of thought regarding distance learning. Many have adjusted themselves to the change and appreciate the organization. They feel that it's much more manageable than it was before. But on the other hand, it has been more difficult for others to assimilate. Many report feeling unmotivated and depressed due to the major home quotes. I suggest that teachers encourage to be assigned meaningful homework, which is less monotonous busy work. Both groups are eager to go back to school and be face-to-face with friends and teachers. With the current system, students are grateful for teachers' office hours. It's very helpful for students to be able to get one-on-one feedback or advice from teachers. Originally, one-on-one feedback was very disorganized, with teachers making their own time. The addition of set hours helps students seek help when needed. In addition to the office hours, the AP review videos on YouTube are very helpful for students to prepare for the tests. I know that I have watched hours and hours of them. These tools have been very helpful, but Zoom attendance and engagement is the most important mechanism for students' education. Overall, almost every class has the majority of students attend, or sometimes it's only around half. I noticed that classes with teachers who engage their students get more to come. Many students and parents feel that the allotted forty-five minutes of class time for teachers to engage with students should not be filled by fifteen minutes of assignment explaining and a simple, any questions at the end. However, many teachers are doing a great job with the new distance learning. And I've seen that the teachers who engage their classes consistently have nearly all students attend. Regarding graduation, the last thing seniors want is for the diplomas to be mailed, or some kind of drive-through to graduation. Students are becoming stressed, unmotivated, and sometimes depressed. With nothing to look forward to besides the end of quarantine, which seems to be getting pushed back day after day. Seniors need some remnants of a normal school year. This is not a simp, this is not simply a matter of taking every single precaution against COVID-nineteen as possible. It's a balance between mental and physical health. I would suggest postponing graduation as little as possible, as long as social distancing guidelines can be met. For every week into summer that the event is pushed back, more and more seniors won't be able to graduate. Due to new work, or they're moving for college. The most likely option would be to have a scaled-down graduation, like the Air Force academies. It would be unfortunate that parents couldn't attend this great moment for their children. But as of now, that appears like the best balance between physical and mental health. We all look forward to hearing any news about graduation, and thank you for this opportunity to represent Costa Mesa High School.
Great, thank you.
I have a question. I have a question for Nikolai.
Yeah.
Is he gone?
No, he's still here.
Are you still here, Nikolai?
Yep.
Um, I would like to know from just your very personal experience and the teachers you have. How many are actually going online with you forty-five minutes a day?
I would say about half have been going forty-five minutes. But in the first week, I would say only like one or two went.
The first week of?
The first week of social distancing?
Okay, well.
Started doing Zoom, there was almost no one went forty-five minutes, but now.
But now they are going forty-five minutes, fifty percent?
So the majority.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have Luke Graham from Early College High School. Is he on? I don't, I don't see him.
Move on to Kenya Rocha. She's here.
He's not. Okay, so Kenya, are you, you're here from Estancia. Where are you, Kenya?
I'm here.
Here you are.
Hi. So, you said, I'm Kenya. I'm from Estancia High School. So counselors, psychologists, and our one-on-recovery campus continues to meet with students who are scheduled for services. And I know our counselors are busy working on student registration for next year. But I think our counselors should meet with our seniors through like a U meeting, because personally, I'm kind of stressed with all this schoolwork. And now with COVID-nineteen taking over, like, we don't know what's gonna happen with our college stuff, so that's kind of stressful. With us now being on a full week, things are going good with our classes and our schedules, but teachers are getting more homework. And I understand that they think we have a lot of free time, which we do. But when all the teachers are thinking the same way, work starts to pile up, and like, our grades start going down. And our teachers, like, I think all of our teachers, well, at least mine, make our classes forty-five minutes long. Like, you have to stay on for the full forty-five minutes. And it, I mean, I understand that, that's good, but like, for example, for me, for math. I have to stay on, even though I'm already done with the work, so I just sit there and like, it's honestly kind of a waste of my time. And for graduation, personally, I don't want a Zoom call graduation, since I'm a senior. That's not what I was wishing to have. And since our school is small, our AV was talking about how we should at least have all the seniors show up by the school. Like, even though, even if we don't have our parents with us or anything. And we still keep the sixty apart regulations, but like, we still show up to school, they're capping down, like, yeah, that's what we want. And that's it.
Thank you, Kenya. And Bailey, is Bailey on?
Yeah, she's here.
Great. Hi, Bailey.
So I'm Bailey from Newport Harbor. So in regards to what the student body feels, I can't speak on behalf of them, at least as a whole, but I can speak on myself. And what I've felt throughout this time. So through the Zooms and everything, I completely agree with all the other schools and their input. On the fact that we have been overwhelmed with schoolwork. I have a lot of classes this semester. And a lot of the teachers think the same thing, that we all have this free time, and then they pile on the homework. And since it ends at twelve, now with the new schedule, they decided to add on maybe a little even more, at least from my, for the curriculum that I have. But I do find that the Wednesday off day is extremely helpful in communicating the one-on-one communication with your teachers. I have scheduled Zooms on Wednesdays with my teachers that I have been struggling on the curriculum with, and we've been able to work through the problems one-on-one. Which have been super helpful. But along with other students' inputs, we also have had teachers not exactly participating or being on Zooms. And as well as students, so it goes both ways. And for support, I would just say that if we could all stress the importance of the Wednesday off and helping you, helping students through that time. If they have help or questions that they need to be answered, the Wednesday is a great day to get that done, and also communicate with teachers. And as well as the AP test, the communication for that has been good, except I do wish that we had more information on that. And the test itself, maybe review, that we can all be participating in everything like that. But I would just say the number one thing that I would like to stress is the aspect of communication, being involved over email with teachers, everything. Because it all, it kind of keeps the stress down, once we all know. with teachers, everything, because it all, it kind of keeps the stress down, once we all know what's going on. And with graduation, it's the same as the other schools. We are hoping for one, but we would all like to still stay on track with the social distancing guidelines. And that's it from Newport Harbor. Thank you.
Great, Bailey. Thank you very much.
Can I ask Bailey the same question? About how, yeah, I mean, Estancia sort of answered it. So Bailey, of your personal teachers, are you getting forty-five minutes of class time?
Um, I would say, so let me think about this real quick and what my schedule is like. Yeah, I would say that for pretty much every single one of my classes, I do have that forty-five minute, except for classes that don't need it and that require like more like self-time with your homework. So that's like my AP class. Since you can't really do much now, it's just prepping for the test in the AP aspect, but everything else, we have.
Thank you, Bailey.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to Julie with Harbor Council.
Good evening, President Flor.
Here you are.
I'm here, I'm here. Good evening, President Flor, board members, Dr. Navarro, cabinet, and guests. Harbor Council has been continuing with our meetings via Zoom and have been reaching out to supply our units with the necessary support for them to continue with their PTA meetings at their schools or for their schools. This looks very different, as you know, but with a little creativity and help from CAPDA, California State PTA, we have been moving forward. A majority of our PTA units have had or are planning to have their elections, thus continuing to adhere to their bylaws. I am very proud of them also for utilizing the different social media platforms to acknowledge their honorary service recipients and for their high schools and to showcase their high school seniors. Community yard signs for seniors are a hot item right now. And I'm proud of the PTAs for supporting this, this organizing it. It's great for the community to drive around and see these too. So Harbor Council is planning to have our very own PTA training chairperson as part of our executive board next year. Our hope is that this will establish personal and intimate workshops to ensure PTA officers, along with other parents, develop the confidence to hold a PTA position at their units. I think this is very important to have hands-on training. Also, I want to mention that partnering, partnering with Dr. Navarro, Newport Mesa Unified School District, we are in the process of planning zone-specific meetings next month in hopes to reach out to the different schools at a more personal level in order to communicate and address pressing issues with our students and in our communities. Also, Harbor Council, I want to announce, voted to supply Dr. Navarro with a supporting statement regarding the changes to grades and the graduation requirements. Approval from Harbor Council PTA Executive Board was on April twenty-third, third, and said letter was sent out April twenty-fourth. And one more thing I wish to report on, because I don't think I ever mentioned this last time, was it is official, our two thousand twenty, twenty-one Harbor Council officers are all set. We have a president-elect Noel Kruger. Executive VP is Lisa Bowler. First VP Programs is Heidi Beth. Second VP Membership is Carrie Oliver. Third VP Legislation is our very own Michelle Barto. Fourth VP Communications is Jennifer Skyver. Treasurer will be Vicki Waldo. Secretary is Missy Reekstra. Historian, Bridget Riley. Auditor, Lauren Melmeister. And I have accepted the position to sit as parliamentarian. So that's it for Harbor Council, so thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Okay, is Pam? There you are. Hi, Pam, how are you? Congratulations. Would you like to share? Unmute yourself, Pam. There you go.
Okay, thank you. Good to see all of you. Board members, Dr. Varon, Cabinet, thank you so much for everything you have done to support our classified employees. We appreciate it all. Especially Kristen and Russell have been great in addressing all the needs and concerns of our classified employees. First off, Nutrition Services has been on the front line since day one. They were relieved last week for one week. They had some new train staff come in and help out so that they could be off for a week, a well-deserved break. They were very stressed, as you can understand. Also, our custodians are there with them every day from morning when they get there until they leave at night to clean up after they're gone. I T is there every day to help everyone, whether on-site or remotely. M and O and Grounds have been working alternate teams to keep all sites maintained. H R payroll, accounting, and budgets have been working on-site and remotely to get day-to-day business done. The warehouses getting all pickup and deliveries finished daily. Office managers are working on-site and remotely. All classified are needed in our hall. Working remotely has been, has increased workload for all of us. It is a new working experience. Again, thank you for everything that you have done and for listening to all of our concerns.
Thank you, Pam. And please, our congratulations to your tier classified that moved up. Do you want to mention their names? I know one of them for sure.
I haven't heard anything, sorry. Something happened, said anything, but I heard at the beginning of the meeting you were talking to Phil.
Okay, great.
Are there any more? I don't know.
No, I'm, I'm talking about Kathy Kiddo from Anderson, our two classified employees that are being recognized at OCDE.
Because I thought we were gonna recognize them at a, at a meeting.
Are we going to? Good.
I don't know. I thought Kristen is maybe in May, but yeah, I did hear about Kathleen and we're very excited for her. That was very, she's, she's well-deserved.
Right.
Yeah, thank you so much for recognizing.
Uh, Dr. Doughty, NMFT.
Good evening, President Flor, members of the board, and Dr. Navarro, members of the community. So I'm going to direct my comments largely related to the grading resolution. We gave some comments earlier and we are very appreciative of the work being done throughout Newport Mesa. NMFT leaders and senior administrators from Ed Services and the Human Resources met multiple times during spring break and afterwards. And during those meetings, we discussed overall philosophies on permanent grades. We gave perspectives from classroom teachers, and we also reviewed potential changes to graduation requirements. We were presented with the proposed resolution on Wednesday with the target of that plan being published on Friday. And we've, haven't had quite enough time with our members to fully vet everything. There's been a lot of internal conversations with two large, well-attended union meetings. And there are a mixture of opinions on the plans. Some elements have strong support, some elements are not very popular. And there are some significant questions that need to be resolved, and we look forward to working with the administration to resolve those questions. We also want to recognize that it is important for the district to have direction on the type of grading system that's going to be used. And those expectations need to be clearly communicated to all stakeholder groups. Us as employees, to parents and students, so we all have direction, what we have, what we should be doing for the remainder of the year. We also recognize there's differences between making a decision, getting a lot of input, and then being able to get everyone in the room and to do a collaborative process. And this is a decision that needs to be made kind of quickly, and so that may influence the style of how that works. But we also want to acknowledge that this is consistent with policies that the school board already has and uses. And so it's completely within the board's authority to make policy changes. Specific for elementary, the majority of our teachers do not believe it's appropriate to use academic grades in TK six, so they support the policy. There's just a wide discrepancy in student abilities to access the curriculum and student participation. We also support the policy to not have participation grades in TK two. The current system have students working on packets and it's very challenging to effectively gauge student participation in those packets right now. There are some recommendations from upper grades of three-six to have some form of mechanism to give feedback for student participation. And there are some recommendations we've bounced around within the comment codes. In secondary school, there is more variety in this. I think everyone agrees there needs to be mechanisms that are not harmful for students in the long term on what shows up in their permanent records. There was not a consensus whether to go with letter grades or credit, no credit. We really did not have a full vetting of that concept. Initial information we had gotten was leaning towards a credit, no credit. When we talked about letter grades with our members last week, it, it didn't seem like it had a lot of pushback, so I think we're pretty neutral on that. We recognize that there are some good motivators for students by using letter grades in the system. What was more concerning, where the questions came, were the grade scale using the different percentages that are in the proposed plan. So I think that needs additional consideration. There also were a lot of questions about how incompletes would work. And the big concern is thinking about the students. There, the students that are not participating in school now are struggling for a variety of reasons that are often beyond the control of our district. And these are the students that are most likely to earn incompletes. And we are concerned about how do we support those students through a summer program or August, September, so that they can complete their coursework. And then just kind of the details of how you make that happen, which, as Dr. Navarro mentioned, we're willing to work on to iron those out. And it's kind of a pretty quick to try to iron out those details at this moment. But we're looking at it from a student support standpoint. We want to make sure that they are making progress towards graduation. We also are concerned that if there's a large number of students that have incompletes, just how do we deal with that as a capacity within our organization? Regarding graduation requirements, we agree that there are changes that need to be made. We don't want to hold anyone back from graduation. We definitely support there should be modifications to the senior project and community service hours. There are definitely a support for making changes to the number of credits for juniors and seniors. There were a number of questions, if changes are made for graduation credits for the underclassmen, potential impacts on elective courses in pathways, career tech, the arts. And we want to make sure that we continue to have those programs in place for all four years for all students for the duration. So in general, as I said, there are many elements that we have strong support. And we are willing to work with the administration and we appreciate the board taking a step to create a vision for our district.
Thank you. Terrific. Okay, so we are moving on to item thirteen now, which is thirteen A is the Isaac facilities use request. Mr. Lee Sung.
All right, good evening, President Flor, members of the board. I have a very brief report on the Isaac Charter. And I will read that to you, to you. This brief report is provided an update on the International School of Science and Culture use of districts' facilities. During the current academic year, Isaac has operated out of the district's Harper site. As the board is aware, Isaac will not be returning to the district's Harper site, nor will it be operating out of any district facility next year. A notice was sent on April sixteen, twenty twenty, reminding Isaac that pursuant to its facility use agreement with the district, Isaac's last day at the Harper site is June thirty, twenty twenty. As you also know, the Orange County Department of Education is the authorizing agency for Isaac. As a courtesy, district staff previously informed the Orange County Office of Education that Isaac will not be returning to the Harper site or operating out of any district facility during the upcoming academic year. At this time, district staff is unaware of where Isaac plans to relocate for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year or what information about this change Isaac may have shared with his families and staff. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Russell. Appreciate it. Okay, any questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a question. I'm trying to raise my hand.
Got it. Mrs. Snell.
So I'm assuming, this is an assumption, that they are not holding classes right now. Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, they informed us about the same time that we went to a school dismissal, that they were moving in that direction as well.
So we don't know what, the students that are, are students that go there, we don't know what kind of support they're, they're getting. Are we able to provide them some support? Or is it, yeah?
Yeah, I'm not aware of what they're doing with their program. They have not reached out to us for any support.
Okay, and it's probably outside our purview to reach out to them because they go to a different school. That, yeah, okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Snell, they would need to reach out to the county who is their district.
Okay, okay.
Any other hands or questions?
Well, unless they're, they're part of our district and they come back for next year, right? So they go through our attendance office as they would as, as back, right?
If, if the students who live in our attendance area choose to come back to us, they would go and follow our enrollment process through our welcome center.
Great, thank you. Quick follow-up, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Russell, if, if these students or parents of students are listening to this meeting, could they reach out to us for support? Do they have to go through OCDE or can they reach out to us and we would connect them to a classroom?
No, they are, they have disenrolled from Newport Mesa Unified School District, so they are technically a student of the Isaac Charter. And as Dr. Navarro said, their authorizing agency is the Orange County Department of Education.
Okay, but they could, they could re, they could re-enroll right now, couldn't they? I'm sorry, hate to beat, beat this horse, but.
Ms. Snell, that's entirely up to the parents.
Okay.
And all parents have the ability to disenroll their student from any district and, and the charter would, would be an example of that. And like we've always said, we welcome all of our students who live in our attendance area.
Okay.
Good, Snell. I, I, they are holding classes, they're doing remote and packet work.
Oh, good.
One of my, one of my Girl Scouts that's in the, in our service unit, they have kindergarten and they're all have, they're having classes.
Okay, wonderful.
Yeah. Okay, moving on to item thirteen B, a report on the twenty twenty census. Thank you, Mrs. Anderson, for bringing this forward. Dr. Navarro. You're on mute, Dr. Navarro.
Sorry about that. Yes, I went ahead and off to Dr. Sir who made all the arrangements for our guest tonight. So, Dr. Sir. Yes, thank you, Dr. Navarro. We are fortunate tonight to have Sarah Middleton with us, who will be sharing information on Census twenty twenty. Sarah is a parent in Newport Mesa and is leading the community-based census efforts for Orange County. She is consulting with Charitable Ventures, the Region Nine Orange County Administrative Community-Based Organization as designated by the California Complete Count Office. So with no further ado, I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Middleton and thank her for being here tonight.
And be sure to remind her to screen that you can, you, we're gonna let her, so she can show her power, PowerPoint. So somebody's got a big, okay, perfect, yay.
Yes, let me start my slideshow here. Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for having me. I am especially excited to be talking to you about the census. I am a true census believer. I started working on this incredible effort in the fall of twenty eighteen, and I cannot not talk about the census. So I've been asked to give you a brief Census one oh one, and then I want to talk in particular about Costa Mesa, Newport Beach. Here we go. So what is the census? It's a government survey that will ask you basic questions required by law. It is actually written into our constitution. It is actually written into our constitution. It will not ask you about immigration or citizenship. And all it is, it's about ten questions that will take you ten minutes and it will impact our next ten years. So why do we get counted? Census data is combined into statistics that are used to make incredibly important policy and budget decisions. So it's really about having healthy communities, better roads and schools. Census data can be used to create jobs, to fund community programs for seniors, children and families, and to improve housing. I think it's really important to note that census data plays a uniquely crucial role in how our country operates and how our country functions. And census data is used to determine how eight hundred billion in federal funding gets distributed over the course of our next ten years. There's an interesting statistic here at the bottom of my slide. Each person not counted could result in a loss of one thousand dollars per year in community funding for the next ten years. I don't think anybody wants that, so we need to count everyone. Of counting everyone, everybody living in the United States right now counts. That includes babies and seniors, that includes immigrants, that includes absolutely everybody. We need to make sure that everyone is counted so that communities get their fair share and that we all get fair representation as well. So how do most people get counted? Brand new this year, the census is online. And no doubt, many of you have probably responded to the census already online at mytwentytwancensus.gov. Very, very simple to take the census survey online. If you haven't taken it online, then you can call into the Census Bureau. And they've got a call center that can take census responses in thirteen different languages. There is also a language guide that has fifty-nine additional languages. And then you can also respond to the census by mail. And by the end of this week, all households in the U.S., if they haven't yet responded to the census, should receive their mailer. The census is safe and confidential. The website is safe and secure. Census responses are protected by extremely strong laws. And the Census Bureau, everybody who works there takes an oath to protect your information. So our community-based census efforts can be contacted, can be contacted through Facebook, Twitter. We have a website set up and this is an email address. So absolutely encouraged questions and comments about the census, how we're doing in Orange County. I can share that our nationwide response rate, we seem to be on track, although, there's my first grader. Although COVID is certainly having an impact on response rates. California is at fifty-five point one percent. Orange County is the fourth highest county in our state with sixty-two point seven percent response rate. Costa Mesa has on average a fifty-eight point nine percent response rate, although we have some very low responding census tracks here, including a census track that is at thirty-six percent. Newport Beach has on average a fifty-three percent response rate. So I think we have some great opportunities for the Newport Mesa Unified School District to promote and amplify the value and the importance of the census. One idea might be at the food distributions at various schools. Could we potentially put out census tote bags or census coloring books for children? Or a postcard with why people should respond to the census? That's one idea. And there is so much more that we could do to encourage, encourage response rates and inform people that, again, the census is, is safe and secure and we need everybody to count.
Any, any questions? I do have one, Sarah. How old do you have to be to be able to fill it out for your family?
So you can be sixteen years old to complete the census for your family.
So one idea is for us to promote within our schools, within our high school students, the opportunity that, to encourage our high school students to perform this very important process by taking it upon themselves to get their parents or their family. And if not, their family members, their adult members, it's for them to fill it out for their parents. Because you only have to be six, you can be sixteen and fill it out.
Right, and we do understand that, that that is happening in many communities, especially in, in communities where parents might not have the language skills that youth are helping. So I, I think that could be a great message to share.
Great. I have a question. Is there a drop dead end of the census?
There is. So, so with COVID, the Census Bureau has adjusted their operational timeline. In a normal year, the census would close on July thirty-one. This year, the census will close on October thirty-one.
Thank you.
Mrs. Flor, you have two hands raised. This is Snell and Mrs. Anderson.
Yep, Mrs. Anderson, Mrs. Anderson.
Hi, yeah. I was wondering if we can possibly ask our high school, history, civics, government, any of those teachers to, if there's a way to include this. As something that like, they may not obviously ask for like a grade or anything, but like to promote it within our secondary program as something for, if teens wanted to help volunteer, they could help in their neighborhood, just putting, you know, notices on doors. But then also our students who are in history and social studies classes would be asked or reminded to fill out the surveys for their families if they're over sixteen. Can we help promote that, that way?
Great, thank you. Ms. Ms. Snell.
That's a great idea. Any way we can promote that. I noticed that you were talking about coloring books or bags. I didn't, and maybe I missed it. So you would provide those that we could give out lunches in?
Yes, we can provide those.
Okay, that's a great idea. Great idea. Okay, we'll take twenty thousand. We could even put it in the, put the, we could put the packets in there as well.
Yes, that's a great idea.
Okay.
Terrific. Any other questions? Great, thank you so much, Sarah. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Your son, it can, it can go back to helping your son out. Okay, moving on, informal reports. Dr. Navarro.
Yes, you know, these are difficult times. And I've talked many times with board about how proud I am, how hard people are working together to really overcome some pretty significant hurdles. It was a quick switch from based onsite learning to offsite learning. But I want to tell you, I'm very, very proud of the effort between our district and our, and our, and our associations. I'm really pleased that our team, which comprises of Russell, Leona, John, have been meeting with our, our association reps and their presidents on a regular basis. And I just appreciate the dialogue that's going on. So I wanted to give a little nod to Pam and to Britt for taking the time. And they've been spending a lot of time with our team to discuss a lot of difficult topics and how to move forward. And what I appreciate the most about the reports I get is that there is no easy answer. There is no one single response. And I, I appreciate that they're listening and, and that we're exploring with them what's a, what the possible solutions are. And I do look forward to the team that's going to be working together under John and Russell's leadership to, to determine how best to meet the needs of the kids who do, who are issued incompletes. That's a very important topic to us. And our goal should be that every kid graduates on time this year. And I hope that, you know, and I know that that's going to be at the forefront of everybody's efforts. And why not shoot for the top, right? And if we don't make it, okay, well, we'll get, I'm sure we'll get close. But I just want to express my, my sincere thanks to, to everybody for meeting and spending time together.
Going down the list would be, Leona, you're next.
Thank you. I think you're going to hear that a lot, that there's going to be a theme tonight for sure. And that is that during these really uncertain times and ever-changing faster than we ever expected, how hard and dedicated people are to working together to find the best solutions that we see in front of us. And I want to echo some of the words that have been shared. Dr. Navarro, that with our associations, it has been a free-flowing and it, and they've represented their unit members very, very well and very clearly, which has really led to some good conversation to then move us forward. And I always appreciate that from, from both of them. And you heard Pam talk about the number of people who have been working. We know that all of our certificated. And they, they just do it so flawlessly. And we know that they, they too are going through their own struggles at home. We heard our students tonight go through struggles. So our teachers and our other employees are in that same situation. The group I want to acknowledge tonight is, I, I've been out for some time and I'm really happy to be back and to try to contribute. But I do need to publicly thank Russell Lee Sung for stepping in in my place and the efforts from Megan Brown and Kristen Clark to really ensure that the communication was continuing with the HR department. Because the HR department tends to be underground. It was sort of like the unsung heroes of many of the things that happened to keep the glue going and the connections between the departments. And so I'm just very, very proud of them. And we're continuing to work, not just on these issues, but you'll start seeing our recruitments coming up and popping up for our teachers for the fall. So yeah, the other pieces of, I want to say normalcy, but it's, I'm not sure it will be that way. But we certainly are moving forward and recruiting. And so thank you to all of them.
Thank you. Going down would be, next would be Tim, welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Flor. Along that theme, so many, so many have said, all across our district, it's been amazing to see all of the hard work and the dedication of so many people to help us to get through this difficult transition from a world that we operated in to an entirely different world. And as you've heard different folks mention, and I don't want to take away, everybody in the whole district has done amazing things. But I wanted to specifically acknowledge that to go to distance learning on the backbone side for the IT department has been an enormous, enormous lift. And they have really worked so hard and dedicated so much energy and effort from figuring out how to get hardware that isn't available in the marketplace, to get our hardware that we have configured properly so that people can use it, to deal with security systems and restructuring them so that we can continue to operate and keep student data private and those types of things while working in a distance. We just, it's not a flip that we can switch and to support software, et cetera. There's just been a tremendous amount of work, kind of behind the scenes, that that department has done to take us from a district that does great instruction in classrooms to a district that can do great instruction through distance learning. So I, I just really wanted to give a special thank you to the entire team in IT for all the hard work that they've done.
Great, thank you. Jeff?
Good evening. It's good to be with you tonight. Just wanted to kind of continue on a theme, you know, we, we've got a different way of doing things. You're spinning the world completely different, the whole back office. You know, you think about purchasing warehouse and payroll, accounting, budget, property and liability. You haven't lived until you've, you've tried to do that at home. And so it's just, it just was a complete different way of spinning things. And, and I'm really appreciative of all the hard work that's gone into making that work and, and still, you know, keeping the, the lights on and doing everything we need to do to support our students. And then just for information, last time we met, we had spent three hundred thousand dollars on COVID nineteen supplies and equipment. We're now up to five hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars and it's climbing very quickly. Thank you so much.
You're muted.
I think everybody just went into shock mode. Thank you.
All right, Dr. Sir.
Yes, thank you. President Flor, you started the meeting out acknowledging all of our outstanding certificated and classified employees. And I would like to second that. Specifically, one group that I would like to acknowledge tonight, under, under that certificated umbrella, is our principals who certainly deserve some recognition for what they've been doing. There's a great deal of work that they accomplish that is both visible to the public as well as a lot of work that is accomplished behind the scenes. Our principals serve as coaches to teachers, leaders to parents and community members, mentors to many employees, heroes to our students, and they fill so many other roles. And during this time of distance learning, they are accomplishing such amazing work. It's really inspiring to see. This work includes, but is definitely not limited to routinely meeting with their staffs online, visiting online classrooms, attending online district meetings, and organizing the distribution of Chromebooks and devices for their communities, along with continually communicating with all of the school stakeholders on a routine daily basis. So simply put, our principals are helping everyone continue with student learning and are making it possible for our entire school system to move forward.
Thank you. We so appreciate all of, we, we so appreciate all of them and all their, their hard work. Dr. Bauermeister, secondary.
As Dr. Navarro said, I'm going to give you an update on our graduation committee. And as you've heard, this is very important to our students and our parents. But I also want to state that it's very important to our staff and our board as well. We know it's important to everybody. So we have had two meetings of our graduation committee, consisting of middle school and high school activities directors and principals to talk about graduation options and year-end award ceremonies. By the end of this week, we should have a calendar ready for year-end award ceremonies, which at this point, we have scheduled to be done virtually. The activities directors have been going back to the students and staff to talk about the different graduation options that we've been talking about. At this point, we've come up with four different graduation options that they're going to talk to their students and staff about, about what are their, number one, number two, number three, and number four. And at this point, I want to make it clear that nothing is off the table. We have not thrown anything out. We would love nothing better than for all of the restrictions to be thrown away and to have a full graduation, June eighteenth, in the stadium packed with people. But as we know, that is probably not an option at this point. While we hope for the best, we need to plan for all of our contingencies. So each school is supposed to come back with their one through four options on Thursday. And it is clear to all, everybody in this committee, I think it's clear to you and after you're free from our students tonight, the first choice for all of our students and all of our schools is to have students in caps and gowns in each school's respective stadium, walking across the stage, having their name read and getting a diploma. Now, whether we're able to do that on June eighteenth or not, we don't know. All of these things are up to, as you well know, the stay-at-home orders, whether they're lifted or not, what's the social distancing requirements are at that time. It is apparent from all of our discussions, students, staff, parents alike, that they would prefer to push the graduation off from June eighteenth to sometime in the summer. And we haven't really discussed dates yet, but sometimes further back than having a virtual graduation. As you've heard, that is the, the last choice for just about everybody. So after Thursday's meeting, we'll have those ranked choices. We'll bring it back to Cabinet to vet those things through Cabinet, and then we will bring that to you. But we have made no decisions, nothing is off the table at this point. We're still discussing, discussing options. We're still discussing options with activities directors, principals, and students.
Kirk? One group that if we've received, I received a number of emails, and you've seen them, is that there is a group of parents out there. Now, we got a lot of emails today from Newport Harbor, but I would venture to say that it's probably similar to everything that if anybody else sent us. But there is a group of parents out there that are willing to step up and help and volunteer in some capacity. And so I don't want to forget and ignore the parents. And if there's a way that we can invite a couple of them in once, so that they have, they can help participate, once a plan has been established. I don't want to forget that we have some valuable individuals that are willing to help within our community. So just keep that in mind.
And I believe our activities directors usually work through the PTAs on those kinds of things as well.
Great. Thank you. Going down, Mr. Drake?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Flor. And I'm going to kind of start the same way Dr. Sur did reiterating something you said at the beginning of this meeting when you paid note to, this is the second time that this group has met in this environment. And one of the things you said is that we keep getting better. And I had a long meeting with our secondary principals today and to kind of reiterate again what Dr. Sur said about the enormity of their role as essential workers in supporting the most essential workers, our teachers. And what I was hearing from them over and over is that there is no one single way to teach in this environment. And our teachers right now are, as you heard from our student board members, reaching out, doing as much as they can to support the learning, while at the same time, learning themselves. And I just want to pay note to that effort and that, I guess, self-reflection that they're going through on a regular basis as they're trying to provide this essential service of learning to kids. And they're getting better. I mean, that was the message I continued to hear from principals, is that everybody's working harder than they ever have, and we're getting better. And we continue to get better day to day. And they don't anticipate that stopping. A lot of pride from our principals in relation to what our teachers are doing and what our students are doing in this environment. And actually, on top of that, what they're actually dealing with on top of trying to learn and to teach. Lots of different barriers can get in the way, but we continue to move forward. I just want to acknowledge that, that there is no one single way to do this. It's our teacher's responsibility to move forward with whatever is working best for their kids at that time and making sure they're delivering the content that their kids need at that time in ways, as you heard from our student board members, that are engaging. And, you know, we're learning as we move along. But we are looking forward. And one of those pieces that we continue to move forward and we'll have a meeting tomorrow is our high school math materials adoption process. We have two more meetings, and we are not letting COVID-19 get in the way of those. We're moving forward tomorrow with calibrating all of the incredibly hard work in gathering evidence of alignment that our teachers did collectively over a six-week period prior to our school dismissal. We're going to dig into that in relation to illustrative mathematics alignment to our standards and the shifts of focus coherence and rigor. And then they'll go ahead and evaluate that. Individually, each teacher will evaluate the materials based off of both their experience and the experience we're trying to create for kids kindergarten through 12th grade. After Wednesday's meeting, we will virtually run a consensus process next Wednesday. And, you know, kind of true to we'll get better, we will learn a lot tomorrow in working with our teachers through calibration and how to best then run a consensus process. George Knights is going to help out with that, along with all the principals, you know, to move this forward. I do want to pay special note to some people who have done an enormous amount of work throughout the year to support this process, and that's Dr. Jake Haley and Dr. DePauli Potness have been representatives to help move and respond to the situations arise throughout the whole process. Gabe Del Real as well. And then also Vanessa Girogo from Orange County Department of Ed has been our facilitator of a lot of our learning through the process. We will go through consensus next Wednesday, and I'll be back to you in May with a recommendation of either to adopt illustrative mathematics as our high school materials or to continue with a pilot process for an entire year next year. And that's, those are the two pieces left for us to decide on one of those. And so I'll be back to you to report that on the 19th of May.
Okay, great. Mr. Lee Sung?
Yes. I think, I think we'd all agree how great it was to hear from our student board reps and the insights of how they're doing and suggestions and what's working, what's not. So great. And I hope they're still here to hear my comment. And I do want to share with the board that we are currently working on our next big thought exchange. And the big thought exchange is going to be on seeking out input, not only from our students, but also our parents and our staff on distance learning. And we believe getting this feedback will help us improve. Like you've heard several comments that that's important. So there will be a thought exchange that will be sent out by the end of this week. And I want to encourage people to take a few minutes to share their thoughts, share their ideas. And the open-ended question is going to be very simply, what's on your mind related to distance learning? And how can we help and offer us suggestions and thoughts? And with this tool, with this powerful tool, as you're aware, that not only people get to contribute their thoughts, they get to see the thoughts of others. And then they get to weigh in on how they feel about that thought with a five-star, a four-star, all the way down to a one-star. And that will give us a really significant and meaningful impact on our distance learning program, what's on their mind, and how we can improve. So I do want to encourage everybody to look out for that email message and to take a few minutes, not only to contribute ideas, but also to go back on Thought Exchange and review the rates or review the thoughts of others and rate them. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And Dr. Jacom?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Follow-up on Russell's. If we can make sure, please, to, when we do that thought exchange, I'm glad we're doing that. I think that's a wonderful idea. If we can make sure that we are sending out just a short kind of blurb or overview about how Thought Exchange works, because I think some parents may not necessarily, they might just think it's a survey and they fill it out one time, and they might not go back and do the rating and the stars process. So if we could just provide a little context, I think we might get the most accurate information.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you. Good to see you all. Thank you. I'm going to go a little bit different route and talk a little bit about the social emotional support for students and families and some next steps on that. And the first one is something that Ms. Anderson shared, and that's a parent education event coming up tomorrow evening. And that is put on by the National Alliance on Mental Health, which is called NAMI. And it is a webinar from 4:00 to 5:00 tomorrow for parents. And it can be reached at namioc.org for information about that. And those are always good resources for people. Different things hit us different ways. And while people may have been fine three or four weeks ago when this first started, there may be some family struggles and concerns going on the longer we go into this quarantine and closure. The other thing is that we're, as a division, Student Services is also looking at what we can do for parent education. And our social workers and our behavior specialists, working with Dr. DiAgostino and Angela Castellanos, they're working on putting together a presentation for parents as well. So we're hoping to be able to roll that out in the next couple of weeks. So you'll see that being advertised as well, just to try and meet the needs of what we're hearing out there. And then along the lines of mental health, some good news is that Orange County was granted the Mental Health Services Grant. It's $6 million for Orange County, and it was supported by every district within Orange County. So it was really the strongest application that was received because of the countywide support for that. And what they're going to be doing with that is they're hiring seven mental health coordinators, Student Service Mental Health Coordinators is what they're called. And they're going to be assigned by region. So a coordinator that is with district and with Capistrano and with Laguna Beach. And it's a trainer of trainers model, and we're looking forward to the work they're going to do. And Angela Castellanos is our liaison with that group through the county. So we're looking forward to some exciting things coming up through the next year with that, based on that grant. And then just a couple of, one business thing for you, just in case you do not know this. Officer Gary Clemente has been one of our school resource officers. And he, good news, bad news, he passed the sergeant's exam and has been promoted to a field supervisor, which means that he is no longer an SRO. And they actually have already filled the position with Officer Irina Thielman. And she is a seven-year veteran and a former elementary school teacher. So we look forward to the opportunity to introduce her to the board. But I think it will be a good fit. It will be exciting to have somebody who has that school experience. So that's all from me.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all of those fabulous reports. It's nice to see that we're all adjusting to this. I think that it's probably easy for those individuals who are introverts, but I can tell you, this is really hard for extroverts. And I think most teachers are extroverts. And I think most people, they go because they like working with people. And so this is really difficult for all of us who are those extroverts. And thank you. Russell, could you go in a little bit into detail regarding, well, I just lost my train of thought, regarding the process for the Thought Exchange and how that was, that question was decided in terms of, it's pretty open-ended. Is it meant to be that way? Okay.
Yes. The beauty of Thought Exchange is that it is an open-ended question, rather than closed-ended questions that typical traditional surveys typically have. And so it's meant to be very open-ended. I give credit to John Drake and Janice Mishney, who's working with the Thought Exchange staff to come up with an appropriate question to solicit the responses that we're hoping to get. And so they did work on that. And like I said, you know, we will launch that at the end of this week. And just like Ms. Anderson said, there will be very clear instructions on how to participate, particularly for those who are new to this new tool.
Okay, great.
In English and Spanish?
Si.
Gracias, señor.
Okay, moving on, as we did, we are moving on to item 17A, which is the grading. I guess the question is, do we want to read the comments first? And so hopefully, Russell, if there are, if there's something that's there, can you perhaps can address it? Or do we want to wait till afterwards and then you can address those questions? I'm open to either way. How would you like to work that?
Yeah, why don't we hear the comments first? Would be great.
So if you all can get, grab your things out again on 17A, and I apologize. Pull them out here. Okay, 17, I see 17A beginning with Allison Sunshine. Is that, is that who you have? Yeah, it's Allison Sunshine, Ms. Snell. Do you have that? Where is Ms. Snell? I lost her. Oh, there you are. Let's move on to, she's, looks like she's offline. We'll come back to her. Ms. Yelsey, you want to read?
Jeannie Lim. I understand that distance learning is tough on everyone. I would still like to suggest to have regular Zoom meetings on a regular scheduled time, which is very important for subjects like science. It is tough for students to learn chemistry via one-hour, once-a-week Zoom. Teachers should allocate more Zoom time according to the regular schedule, although it could be shorter, 60 minutes, and provide more digital learning materials for students. In addition, as much as we would like to maintain high-quality education, I don't think we can be on the same level as in-person class teaching. With that in mind, teachers should not have the same level of expectation as if it is a regular classroom, the tough grading, et cetera. It is no time to be tough now. We should keep learning, we should keep the learning process but possibly relax the standard to reflect the limitation occurred during pandemic. I think students not only need to be given opportunity to improve their grades as of March 13th, but they should not be penalized with lower grade than the March 13th grade, providing they participate and turn in all the work on time. We are fortunate that we are staying healthy and able to provide our children with the distance learning tools, which many might not have.
Great, thank you. Ms. Snell, you are, Ms. Snell?
Yes.
You were Allison Sunshine on 17? Would you like to read 17A?
Yes. I write in favor of Resolution 21-04-20, which recommends a new grading policy for spring 2020 that allows students to earn a A, 85% to 100%, a B, 70% to 84%, a C, 55% to 69%, or incomplete, 54% or below, with an opportunity to make up the work in the summer and/or fall. As a parent of a hard-working junior, I think this proposal strikes a reasonable balance that allows students to continue earning letter grades on a more relaxed scale while accommodating the unique needs of students whose families have been adversely affected by the coronavirus. It seems like an equitable compromise under the circumstances, and it does no harm, unlike a strict pass/fail policy, which would harm those students who wish to preserve their grades this semester. For what it's worth, I would also be in favor of a policy that allows the students to choose for each class by a specified date, whether to keep their grades or to opt for pass/fail. This is what my older son's college has decided to do, and my son feels it is fair and reasonable. Thank you, NMUSD Board members, for working hard to develop a thoughtful policy that accommodates the interests and needs of all students.
Thank you. Going on to Ms. Anderson. Where is, you're on mute, Ms. Anderson?
Oh, thank you. My comment is from Julie Kelly. In a Washington Post op-ed by Professor Lisa Servon at University of Pennsylvania, she describes asking her 19 graduate students a question she asks at the start of every Zoom class. "How's everyone doing two weeks into the remote learning experiment triggered by the novel coronavirus?" Students said, "Honestly, I'm having trouble focusing on schoolwork." One replied, "I just can't get motivated." The other 18 heads on her screen, all in their individual Zoom windows, nodded in agreement. Answers from Professor Servon's graduate students mirror the conversations that I have had with my sons this weekend. One, a high school senior, and the other, a college freshman. Being extricated from daily routines, regular interpersonal connections with adults other than parents, scholarly and non-scholarly deliberations with peers has left a mark on them. I'm confident they will adjust in time, but only with the passage of time. Grades are a measurement of student progress against a set of standards. How are grades? How are grades measured when the standards of delivery, physical versus distance, live versus technology-based versus self-taught, in-school versus at-home with varying levels of distraction, and supervised versus unsupervised are still being developed? Certainly, they are not standardized among the cohorts. Please consider using pass/no credit as a measurement of student and teacher success during middle school and high school semester two as classrooms transition from traditional to modified learning environments. We all have a lot to learn from distance learning's implementation. Let us, parents and educators, assess ourselves during the second semester. Moving forward, we can design systems for teachers and students to build upon for success and measurement in future semesters.
Thank you. Ms. Barto, you have the next one from Satali.
Yes, from Satali. We are all struggling with what we are facing in all. Many of us students struggle with mental health, and our way of dealing it with it is with sports. Without this, we tend to have to fight it with more of our mental strength. It really is not easy. Extra credit requirements were made to be hands-on activities with social conversations and physical teaching and learning. They were made to be fun, but with the lack of resources that the virus and social distancing has caused us, all we are assigned is reading assignments. We already struggle mentally, and a lot of unnecessary reading, whose purpose is requirements and nothing else, is difficult for us. The purpose of reading articles has no purpose but to fill the gaps of credits that seniors will not have the opportunity to enjoy.
Thank you. Ms. Black.
Yes, my community member is Hakim Lim. Maintaining a high expectation of student and regular standard grading during a pandemic is tough. Some teachers manage to maneuver the technology challenge of distant learning, and some are not doing so well. All of us are trying our best. Nonetheless, it is not wise to put a short deadline, short notice test, and expect perfection from students during regular class time. It is understandable since we want our kids to strive for the best grade. But not now. Subjects like science and math should have more Zoom time, three times a week, she has in parentheses, a short one for Monday, and then one to one and a half hour during the block schedule. And that's, let's see, like regular school time, I guess. And they should assign homework ahead of time, beginning of the week to be due by the end of the week, so students have time to work on it. The teachers also should provide lecture via YouTube, so students can access it anytime. My son's honor cam teacher has only one hour Zoom meeting per week during their block schedule and one other optional Zoom meeting for all periods. This was a disaster with over 60 kids joining in. Science and math need to be taught and explained. They are not like history where we can just read and understand. I think that having pass, no pass, or using baseline of March 13th grade is grades is a reasonable option. Students will have a chance to improve their grades by doing the work and submitting it on time, but not being penalized with lower grades if they are having a hard time understanding the subject. Hiring tutor is not a good option here since everything is done via Zoom. Most school districts opt either one of these grading systems, even competitive schools such as Irvine Unified is doing pass/no pass. Having March 13th grading as a baseline is also a good idea so students have the opportunity to improve their grades. I am fully understanding of the drawbacks of students with As as of March 13, which may may think that they do not have to work for the rest of the year. But I believe that these A students will most likely still want to do work because they want to maintain their good GPA as the foundation for next year.
I think those are all the comments. So I'll turn it back over to Mr. Lee Sung for our presentation. Russell, you're on mute.
Okay, there we go. You can hear me.
Thank you, Russell.
Okay, when I shared the screen, I couldn't find my unmute button. All right. So first of all, good evening, Mrs. Flor, members of the board, and all of our Zoom guests this evening. Before I start my report, I do want to have just a bit of a contingency plan here because I've been knocked out of three Zoom meetings throughout the day. So if I lose my internet connection, I do promise the board and everybody that I will continue to log in until I get back in. So I just hope you promise to let me back in, okay? Just in case, I just want to have that little contingency in case I get knocked off the Zoom meeting. So I want to start, usually I say my thanks, but I want to do my thank you here upfront. Why is my screen not advancing? All right, sorry, folks, technical difficulty.
Okay, so we call Janet?
Yeah, I'm sorry, my slideshow is not advancing.
So is that a using Google Sliders, that a PDF?
This is a Google Slide.
You want me to share and you talk?
I was smart, I printed it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, folks, I'm not sure why my report is not advancing. Mrs. Flor, I respectfully request that maybe you move on with the agenda, and I will.
Okay.
Because I really do need to use this presentation to move on. My apologies to everybody.
No problem. Between you and Janet, I'm sure you'll work it out. Okay.
And as soon as soon as I'm ready, I will let you know.
Okay, so do you want to take the screen sharing? Are you going to?
Yeah, I'm going to do that, fix it, and I will be right back.
Okay, so we're going to move on to the consent calendar, Mrs. Black. How I get you?
All items listed under the consent calendar are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted by the board in one motion. This includes the consent calendars for business, education services, human resources, student support services, and the superintendent. There will be no discussion of these items prior to the time the board votes on the motion unless members of the board, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar. Public requests of items to be discussed and/or removed should be submitted in writing prior to the board's consideration of the consent calendar.
Okay, on the consent calendar, there were a couple of questions from the board. Did they get their? Mrs. Snell, you had a couple of questions on item 15B2. Did you get your questions answered?
I don't believe so, unless it came in really late. Okay, my concern was, and we may have no choice in this matter because of the timing issue, but the the books, the textbooks were displayed on March 11th, and we were pretty much closed by March 16th or 18th. And so how can parents review these books? Do we have to go forward with this because we need to order them for the fall?
Yeah, so I think your question, Ms. Snell, and I had answered that, but maybe you didn't get it, is was was are there any legal obligations?
Yes.
One of our obligations, these are all AP history books. One of our obligations is to make sure that the materials we're using are aligned with the College Board course lines. And and so that was really our first task in moving forward, is making sure that the materials we're recommending are aligned. There isn't actually a local requirement to for any adoption to publicly display them. There is a state requirement when the state is adopting materials for districts to potentially pilot and adopt. There is a requirement for them to have a 30-day period of showing the materials. We have always done that. Our intention at the beginning of this was to do that until obviously went into dismissal. There were still options for people to contact us, but but we know how things go. That that did not happen. My preference, because one of the things that the AP teachers are always asking for, and all teachers are, is that the materials are here in time to have them for the beginning of the school year, which has required us, in our experience over the last couple of years, to move forward with adoption so that we can make sure that those materials are here. I'm happy to, you know, moving forward, make sure that there's digital access to all of the materials for parents to review and for for kids to review. But my my request would be that we do move forward with adoption or recommendation for adoption.
Along those lines, given the fact that we are now doing a lot of distance learning, did we, when we are approving all of these AP, even some of our student board members today talked about YouTube prep with through with AP courses being offered, YouTube prep work, videos were being offered. Did we look at whether these textbooks have online capabilities and online support? In in this new day and age, I mean, it's opening our eyes to even digital textbooks now.
Yeah, so the the teachers did. That was one of the components that they looked at. It was not, I mean, frankly, the the most important part to them was the content of of AP and that it was aligned to, you know, the College Board requirements. I don't know off the top of my head the extent of of the digital capabilities of each of the adoptions before you, but that was a component that the teachers looked at.
Mrs. Metoyer?
One of the things that was brought out in agenda prep that I wanted to comment on was the fact that the AP teachers of Social Studies got together from all four, all six schools, and agreed that these will all be used for these courses in the district. So no longer do we have different books in different schools because of the preference of the teachers. They got together. I think that's a really good step in the right direction.
Okay, so actually, my concern wasn't that the books were the best because they are picked by the teachers and and the administration. But do you, I want to repeat what you said to me to make sure I understood. You're saying that these books, you're not aware if they're on online yet, so parents couldn't look at them online because you're not aware of that.
That was two different, two different parts of the digital conversation.
Okay, okay. You're because your 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 volume is really low. I don't know, maybe it's just me. Go ahead.
Your, we can provide digital access to the demos of the books and to the content of the books. The question that that Ms. Flor was asking in relation to that I responded to was the digital capabilities of the materials. That that was something that the the teachers looked at. But I don't know to what extent they have video, they have YouTube connections and things like that. But that is something that was considered by the teachers as they went through to select materials.
Okay, yes, I actually was referring to my initial question. So there is a digital. Parents could look digitally at these books if they wanted to see them. And we need to order these books immediately? Or can we give parents a couple of weeks to go online to look at them if they want to?
Yeah, that would be up to the board. We can go ahead and put it off. What I can't promise, nor at any point could I promise, but as we push further back into the end of this school year, there is more potential for those books not to be here, especially with delivery and everything in this age of of the virus, for those books not to be here at the beginning of the school. But if it's the desire of the board to push back the adoption, the the recommendation for adoption so that there can be public viewing, we can do that, just eyes wide open. It may not be here in the fall.
Okay, that's that's not acceptable. So I guess I would propose to somebody, want to have a suggestion?
Yeah, I agree with you, Vicky. And one of the things that I would actually suggest, if we could just push this back to one board meeting just till May 19, is one of the things that had come up a few times in the Human Relations Task Force was making sure that history and social studies curriculum was seen through an appropriate lens. And so I think I would love if we could have the very specific ask of submitting these to the Human Relations Task Force and having, I believe there's like a policy team, look at them briefly and also have a recommendation. I think that would be helpful since people can't go and get the physical copy that's at the district.
That that's that's certainly an idea we could do. I I'm just, because you're saying you can't guarantee the books by September, August, I'm concerned about that.
I'm also concerned that the AP courses are determined nationally. So the content.
Oh.
It's a national course.
Yeah, the content is is determined by the College Board.
Exactly.
Ms. Ms. Barto.
Sorry, Michelle.
Okay, I just did a quick search. That's the benefit of being online in this meeting. They are all easily available for unlimited viewing for like $32 each. Couldn't we just, I mean, the teachers agreed on them. If parents want to view them, is there a way we could just purchase the six books, spend a hundred bucks, and give people access to kind of page through them online? And I mean, I don't know, there's a different license for us as a school district, but it certainly seems like an easy solution to allow people to view it.
Yeah, John, again, I know that the teachers really, but my concern is not being able to to provide that access regardless of how many parents, because we know typically, we don't have a lot of parents previewing the textbooks. We know that, history has documented that. It's still, you know, while it's legally, we're not required. I think it's still important that we offer have that opportunity. And so is, and I guess the question is, our next meeting is not till the 19th, but we're having a study session sometime before. I'm assuming that we're having the study session before that. I am concerned that we we want to make sure that we get these textbooks in the hands of students by September and actually by by August. So we have to meet that deadline. Is there is there a possibility that, given that, that we can have something and open it up for at least two weeks? Is there a or I mean, is that versus a month? Give it, give it a two-week extension?
We could do it whatever you would want. Mrs. Flor, you have, Mrs. Yelsey has a question.
Yeah, Mrs. Yelsey, I see her.
Question, I think we need to remember their AP courses. And we don't we don't set the curriculum for the AP courses. And it's not like any other regular history class where we would have some input. If we don't use these, then the then the students will not be aligning their curriculum to what's taught at a national level. So I think it's more important that the kids are assured to get these books by August when they need them.
I I have a suggestion. Maybe we can meet somewhere in between. What if we did a two-week window? What if we did a two week window, but at the end of the two week window of John doesn't have any, if parents don't have any concerns that we give John the authority to go ahead and order without having to come back to the meeting? Authority to go and then two week window. That way we're only holding it up two weeks and maybe we'll get the books on time.
Okay, do we need to pull it to do that or leave it on the consent calendar?
I think if we just leave it as a direction to us, we're good. And I'll ask John to report to you what the comments were. And Michelle, whatever way we need to do it, we'll get them up for people to see. John, would that work?
Yes, I can, I can definitely do that.
Okay. So if you don't mind giving him the authority or John the authority after the two week, with the stipulation that he shared with the board, any concerns that might be raised before we order?
I think the safest thing, though, is to remove it off the consent and vote on it because it is a consent item. And if we, we can't really amend a consent item.
Move it to discussion action.
Put on it after this. Are there any other questions regarding the consent calendar as presented? Okay, so do I have?
I move that we adopt the consent calendar as presented with the exception of fifteen B two, which is moving to discussion action.
Okay, uh, is there a second? Mrs. Black, so it's Ms. Metoye and Ms. made the motion and Mrs. Black seconded it. Roll call, please.
Fleur?
Yes.
Ms. Yelsey? Ms. Yelsey?
Yes, she said, she said yes, but she's on mute.
Okay, Ms. Black?
Yes.
Ms. Bartow?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Snell?
Yes.
Ms. Metoye?
Yes.
Okay, and we'll take fifteen B now. I believe the motion is to to provide, to authorize John Drake to make the purchase of these AP textbooks after whatever the date is of two weeks. Subject to the, you know, putting it online. Is that, is that basically, we're making it available for two weeks? And then we're authorizing you to go ahead and make the purchase. Is that, is that reasonable? Okay. Did you move that, Mrs. Black?
Yes.
Okay.
Second with stating May thirteenth.
Is it May thirteenth?
That's two weeks.
May thirteenth, great.
I mean, yeah, twelfth, fifteenth, yeah.
Okay. So it was moved by Mrs. Black and seconded by Mrs. Metoye. And Ms. Snyder, do you have enough information to write that motion?
I do.
Great. Roll call.
Ms. Fleur?
Yes.
Ms. Yelsey?
Yes.
Ms. Black?
Yes.
Ms. Bartow?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Snell?
Yes.
Ms. Metoye?
Yes.
Okay, moving on, how are we doing, Russell?
We're gonna give it another try.
Okay. Turn it back over to you.
All right, okay. Okay, thank you, everybody. Sorry about that. So I was saying that normally I say my thank yous to the end, but I think in this case it's very appropriate that I start with the thank yous. And just a acknowledgement, and you heard many examples today from several people. You know, just an incredible appreciation for everybody stepping up to this challenge and supporting our students, including the employees who are working from home, the employees who have to come in physically to work to provide the services to our students and to our community and to keep our district functioning. But I also want to call out another group of individuals that are playing an incredible role in this distance learning, and that is the parents. The fact that the parents have had to adjust their schedules, their their lives, and to support students from home like never before. I do want to acknowledge and show our appreciation for all the things that they're doing at home. The other group, of course, is the students themselves and the fact that they have had to be flexible. They have had to adjust. And it was so great to hear from our student board reps tonight proving that that's exactly what they and their classmates are doing and the resiliency that they are showing. And, you know, doing everything they can to continue and progress their learning. And that's what this is all about. This, that's what this resolution and the efforts that we have taken to get to this point, to bring this to you as the board. That's what this is about. It's about supporting our students during this crisis. And there have been many opinions and many different perspectives on how best to do that. And I want to say that I appreciate that. I appreciate the fact that we've had passionate discussions about this. Long discussions, deep back and forth, considering so many different perspectives and input. And some agree, some partially agree, some disagree. And that's okay, as long as we keep our focus on the students. And I believe that we're all doing that and working towards that common goal. But I also heard, and I also believe that it's time that we make a district, a district decision because our students deserve to know what system we're going to use. Our parents need to know, our staff needs to know. And we still have just shy of eight weeks left in our school year. So I do want to say that all the questions and details and unanswered questions may not be answered in this presentation because there's a lot of process and details that we need to work on after the policy decision is made. But tonight it is about setting the policy for the district. And then it's up to the staff to fully implement and to work together. And just a comment, I hope that our students are still on the Zoom. But I want to say to them that we're making these important decisions to support you in these challenging times. And we do recognize hardships and the adjustments that you've had to make. And we also need to keep, have you keep working each day to maintain the focus on learning and take care of your health and support your family. And I think all students are going to be stronger through this crisis. And I think we as a district, and I've heard this from so many people, that we as a district are going to be a stronger district as well. This is not a normal situation. And I believe we're going to be okay and we're going to be better than okay through this crisis. So we're going to work together for the benefit of the students. And so with that, I'm going to start my report and start with a little bit of history. Now, starting March fourth, which is not long ago, but it feels like it was an eternity ago. But on March fourth, the state of California declared an emergency. On March thirteenth, our board adopted the resolution authorizing the superintendent to take necessary actions to respond to this COVID nineteen crisis. On the same day, we announced that Newport Mesa was closing school campus physically, starting March sixteenth through April third, which would then be followed by spring break. And we began the implementation of the distance learning plan. However, that following week, on Monday and Tuesday, in fact, I remember this vividly, we were making plans to implement distance learning. And all of a sudden, that evening, Monday into Tuesday, we received news that there was further social distancing restrictions that were imposed from groups of fifty down to groups of ten. And that was a game changer. Because all the implementation plans that we had made to have employees come in now had to be adjusted. And that included trainings, getting the tools and platforms ready, getting devices ready, and all the resources for the family. That was a game changer. Then on March nineteenth, that same week, there was a, an executive order issued by the governor to stay at home. Again, causing us to have further adjustments to our planning and implementation. In that same executive order, the governor identified essential services. And within those essential services includes the government sector, which includes school districts. And we received specific direction to do two things. The first was to provide meals to students and the second was to continue learning in a distance environment. And we take that commitment and that directive very seriously. And you've heard so many examples of how we've come together to step up to do that. Moving forward, on April first, the state superintendent of public instruction, Tony Thurman, stated that it appears that students will not return to school campuses before the end of the school year. Even though we acknowledged this was not a directive, it basically had the effect of a directive because school districts all across the state started reacting to that statement. And the governor also echoed that same statement. Therefore, on the following day, April second, Newport Mesa announced that the extension of school dismissal and distance learning would be through the end of the school year. And what that did is allowed us to plan, to plan not for a week at a time or two or three, but plan all the way through to the end of the school year. And therefore, our planning and our implementation continues. I want to start with just touching upon the meals, even though this is not a report on meals. I'm so proud of this that we as a district began meal service the very first day of school dismissal. So starting from March sixteenth all the way to last Friday, we have served over a hundred thousand meals. And we are now up to averaging about five thousand five hundred meals per day. And so we have definitely a lot of gratitude for our nutrition services employees and department for delivering the service to our kids and to our community. Okay, back to distance learning. So since we are now in distance learning for the rest of the school year, we have to look now at our policy to see if there are changes that are needed. So tonight's resolution is based on a temporary policy change in two areas. The first one is the grading system for elementary, middle, and high school. And the second area is graduation requirements, specifically credits and a couple other diploma requirements. That's what this resolution is about this evening. So the resolution is entitled grading and graduation requirements during emergency school dismissal and distance learning. And that's what you have before you tonight. So now let me go into some of the details. So in preparation to reach this point, as you've heard, there have been great discussions, debate, back and forth, looking at so many different pieces of information. And I want to share a few of those tonight. The first one is the guidance that we've received from our state department of education. Very thorough and comprehensive, based on research, best practices. We also received guidance from our own Orange County Department of Education, including meetings that were held at the superintendent level and meetings that were held at the assistant super level of instruction. We also took a close look at the guidance that we receive from higher education institutions. They first of all had to make the same difficult decisions for their own institution, for their own students. And then that guidance was also affecting their admissions policies. So it definitely affected how we look at our own local policies. We are a challenge success district and we have a challenge success school and we partner with them. They also weighed in and gave guidance to us and other school districts across the nation. We've also been doing some work. We just started work with Jill Feldman, who is a researcher consultant on grading for equity. And he has also issued guidance and recommendations. We also took all of this guidance and recommendations and had deep discussions with NMFT, as you heard Dr. Doughty mention earlier in the meeting. Very long discussions with principals who also had discussions with their staff and teachers and hearing input from parents and students. And we as board members, I know you've heard directly from students and parents and staff as we have at the district level. So we consider all of this guidance, but then we have to take all that guidance and look at how that applies to us here in Newport Mesa. So in order to do that, we have to really look deep at what our values and principles are. And we can't just take guidance and just plop it into our policy. We need to evaluate it. And that's what we did very deeply, looking at values and principles. And to highlight that, Dr. Navarro sent a message to all of our staff and all of our parents on April twenty fourth, really highlighting the challenges and the context that this decision is made, also expressing those values and principles. So if you have not read this and you're hearing my message tonight, I please encourage you, recommend that you take a look very closely at Dr. Navarro's message. It will really give you insight into the context and how we reached this decision. So when we looked at our values and principles, it fell into three categories or three themes. The first one is equity. The second is support for the whole child and also this philosophy of do no harm. And let me give some specifics. So first, in the area of equity, in the area of equity, this phrase came from one of those deep discussions at the site level. Is acknowledge that every student's home learning environment is unique. We have to recognize that. And also recognizing that access to support for student varies from home to home. And that's in the form of either technology or parental support or presence and the other challenges and hardships that individuals are facing in their homes. And we have acknowledged this from the beginning that there are obstacles in the way of providing equity. And in this environment, some of those obstacles are technology. And so we have been working from day one to make sure that our students have the device and the Wi-Fi access to be able to access the instructional program and resources from home. The next category is supporting the whole child. And again, you've heard some of these comments, public comments from parents describing firsthand the hardships and challenges that they're having. And we know that every family is suffering these types of hardships and challenges to various degrees. And it's for our students and it's for our families as well as our teachers delivering the instruction. We want to support the mental health needs and social emotional needs and recognize that there's stress and anxiety to to everybody. And stress and anxiety comes out in different ways. Sometimes we can't tell that an individual is stressed or depressed. And we heard that word from some of our student reps tonight. We do recognize that and we're trying to make decisions to support this. And this was another concept and theme that surfaced through many discussions. And that is creating a sense of routine. In fact, last board meeting, we had several students talk about how important it was to fall into a level of routine and normalcy as much as possible in these uncertain times that keep changing. Then the concept and the philosophy of do no harm. And this is what you read throughout all of the guidance and all of the recommendations by the experts and researchers. And the first point here is that, of course, we need to support all of our students. But we also had a message coming out loud and clear that we did want to maintain some reasonable levels of accountability for our students. But we need to provide safety nets for them and not just the students who are taking highly rigorous classes, but also students who are struggling to pass their classes and students in the middle, all students. And we need to recognize that the completed work and progress of our students. And we need to recognize that the completed work and progress of our students should be valued. And we heard that also coming through. And that also their ongoing efforts between now and in the end of the school year should also be recognized all the way to the end of the grading period. We want to support students in their higher education goals and not put them at a disadvantage now or in the future. And the other point that came out deep in the discussion was this isn't just about seniors, even though we need to provide support for them, but it's for all of our students. And particularly when we're looking at GPA, the impact of GPA, it's not just seniors, but it's also the ninth, 10th, and 11th grade students as well. So, there is this overarching philosophy embedded through all of our decisions in this resolution about do no harm. So, now let me get into the specifics of the resolution. I want to start with the temporary modified grading system that we are proposing for elementary students TK through six. So, the good news is that we did complete trimester one and two. And so, those marks are all on record. So, for trimester three only, students will continue to receive comments on their report cards based on their academic progress. However, we will not include numerical marks and we will not include effort marks, which is the oh, outstanding, satisfactory, or needs to improve. Those will not be given. We also have a category on a report card that rates characteristics or behavior for TK through, I'm sorry, for kindergarten through six, and a section called social emotional for our TKers. And we also list absences on the report card. These categories will not be recorded on the report card. Moving on now to the modified grading system for middle school and for our high school. So, the first part of this is for semester two, students will be graded on an A, B, and C grading scale. As students who are unable to complete the required coursework at the required level will receive an incomplete mark, which will allow them to make up the coursework and earn a grade of A through C and credit for the course. The incomplete work must be completed within six weeks of the next semester, which will include summer of 2020 and all the way through October 2nd of 2020. And if a student does not complete the coursework by the deadline, the student will receive a mark of no credit rather than an F. And I want to pause here to give a bit of the rationale behind this recommendation based on our principles. So, the first part of this is whether we as a district should continue to give Fs or if we should do incomplete or no credit. And this is a big decision. And I want to first talk about Fs. And when we read the guidance everywhere, whether it's from the state or from the researchers, the F was really probably the most harmful option that we could have considered. That basically means that the student has to start all over, and it's a permanent record on their transcripts. And it's not aligned to the guidance. In fact, in monitoring other Orange County school districts, which we did on a day-to-day basis, there is no other school district that was considering an F grade as an option. So, now switching over to incomplete. Incomplete is an option that was aligned to the guidance. It is something that was recommended by Joe Feldman and Challenge Success. And under normal circumstances, incomplete is used for those extenuating situations. And I would definitely put a global pandemic and the impact to learning as an extenuating situation. So, this is in alignment with the no harm philosophy. And it also maintains some accountability for students. It doesn't give them a free grade, like some districts have done, gone to the extreme. There is some level of accountability here and allows students to finish. And if they don't finish at the end of the grading period, they have an opportunity to finish within a reasonable amount of time after the grading period. Now, you've heard this multiple times already this evening, that we have made a commitment that if this policy is passed, we will work collaboratively with NMFT. We need to bring some teacher leaders together, some counselors together, some site principals together to come up to exactly how we can support our students and our teachers in these students with incompletes. And I also heard this in the discussion. Our first task is to support students to pass within the end of the grading period. That's our first option. But if they need more time, we will support them in their summer. And what that plan looks like and the details of the plan, that's where we need to work collaboratively to put that together. And I do want to assure parents and students that we will have a support plan for the summer and for the beginning of the school year. But we want students to finish, we want students to get a grade as the first option. All right, moving on to the other part of the grading system for middle school and high school. Another area to support students in this environment and to recognize that the learning and the adjustment is hard and difficult. That we are proposing a common grading scale that would be applied for semester two for a middle school and for high school. And that would be, an A would be eighty-five percent and above. B would be seventy percent to eighty-four, and a C would be fifty-five percent to sixty-five. And incomplete would be below that. And we believe that this is something that would allow students to maintain eligibility for A through G through their UCs and would encourage them and give them hope in this environment to work hard to get at least to that C level. And I do want to go back to the concept of A through C. That this is, again, like I said, a no harm philosophy. But we also want to recognize the efforts of the students. That we want to give them credit for the work that they've done up to this point and up until March 13th. We want to support the work that they're going to do from now, moving to the end. And I want to elaborate on GPA just for a moment, because this was a big part of our decision and rationale to utilize grades rather than credit or pass. That the UCs and CSUs have talked about that they don't want to harm students, that they will give them the same level of weight and admissions credit, if you will, to whether they have pass or whether they have grades. However, they are saying that the GPA calculations is handled differently. For example, if it's a credit or a pass on the student's transcript, that course is not calculated in the GPA. However, if it is a grade, it will be calculated into the GPA, including the weighted grading system that we have here in our district for honors AP and IB classes. So, we believe that by going to pass and credit, that there could be a disadvantage for our students in their higher education goals, as I mentioned earlier, in our principles and values. And the other aspect here was the fact that grades is something that we're used to. There is a sense of normalcy and consistency with that. And some people could argue that that type of normalcy gives students comfort and reduces the anxiety that they're feeling. So, that is some of the rationale based on this recommendation. Moving on into graduation requirements. And this would apply to all of our current high school students. And that is in the area of credits for our comprehensive sites, as well as early college, that the number of credits would go from two hundred and thirty to two twenty, specifically our elective credits from eighty to seventy. And I need to state very clearly that Newport Mesa's graduation requirements far exceed the state requirements. And this was another area of recommendation by the state that we can consider a graduation requirement change. And so, this is why it's part of our proposal. And students who choose to withdraw from an elective course during this current semester, they'll be able to drop that class. And rather than receiving a withdrawal fail, there will be no record of the drop. And the purpose of this is not to eliminate electives. Coming from a former music teacher, which you all know, that is the last thing that I would want to do and the last thing that I know our board and district wants to do. We value and support our electives, our elective offerings for students and our teachers who are teaching those courses. That is not our intent. The intent is simply this, that if students are really struggling in this environment and they need to drop a class to concentrate on those required mandated courses or the courses they need to graduate or the courses that they need to fulfill the A through G, then this would be an option for them. We are not dropping kids automatically. This would be a conversation between students, their parents, and their counselor before they make that decision. But this allows the students who need that, whether they're a senior, a junior, or a freshman or sophomore, if they need that now, they would have this as an option. The same thing for our continuation and independent study high schools. Same thing, except we would be reducing the number of required elective credits from eighty to sixty and overall credits from two hundred and thirty to two hundred and ten. And in our analysis at this point of students who are right on the verge of whether they are on track to graduate or are going to really have to buckle down these last few weeks, this would be very helpful to them. Again, they can concentrate on those required courses that they need required to meet the state and district requirements. Two other areas that are part of the resolution to assist students. Again, this is a Newport Mesa requirement, and I so appreciate how we value students doing community service. But what we heard, our students are struggling to be able to do this, obviously in a stay-at-home environment. So, this is a requirement, a graduation diploma requirement that we are recommending that should not be required for a diploma for the class of 2020 only. But we do want students to submit their hours that they've completed. We want them to be recognized and acknowledged for that community service work and to be eligible for any scholarships or recognitions that may come their way for their great service to our community. And the other area is in the areas of senior project. And this is another area we're recommending that should not be required for a diploma for this graduating class of 2020. However, in getting input from NMFT and some of our teachers, that some of the senior project elements are assigned as classroom assignments. And we do not want to stop that. We want to encourage that to continue. That if the teacher requires that as part of their class assignment, we want that to continue. So, we have that in the wording of the resolution. But we believe these are two additional areas that will again, support our students in this very difficult time. So, we are recommending to the board the adoption of this resolution on grading and graduation requirement.
Thank you, Russell. I'm putting on the, so if you can raise your hand, because we still have the report on, so I can't see everybody. So, if you can use your hands, I'd appreciate it. Oh, there they go. Okay, Ms. Bartow, I see your hand.
Thank you. I think I really enjoyed your report. The biggest question that I am still trying to understand, and I know it's a work in progress, for those students who, you know, had family circumstances and got a lower grade than they normally would have for a C, that's one thing, I think. But how do, what do we have in mind for the fall where they may need some additional help in understanding? You know, it's not just a matter of not being able to get the assignments and because of wifi access, but it's more of a, they didn't understand the material.
So, you are identifying a huge challenge for us and for every school in the nation. And there is no doubt going to be a level of learning loss. We're working diligently not to allow that to happen. But the reality of the situation is this is not normal. The amount of instruction time and being in class is not what it normally is. So, not only do we need a plan to support students with the incompletes, but we also need a plan to support our students when they return in the fall. And this is going to be in every course. We cannot start the fall as business as usual. And I'm hearing that, you know, across the state, throughout our county. And that's another plan. That's a separate plan that we need to put together collaboratively, because the fall is going to look very different. Now, I'm going to tell you, it complicates it, you know, tenfold when we don't know what the status is going to be in the fall. And I do want to take this opportunity to respond to one of the public comment questions that we've heard is, are we going to chop, or I think was the word, put that on the chopping block to start in the fall? No, we plan to continue. Worst-case scenario, we're continuing in distance learning. And we may have to have several contingency plans depending on what the situation is as we approach the fall. So, there's a number of things that we need to do and be prepared for. I've also done some reading, as you probably have, that we could start out with in-person instruction and a month into the school year, be back into social distancing again. So, we need to be prepared. And I will tell you, now, we're going to be much better prepared. But all of those things are already part of our discussions. Do we have a final plan? Absolutely not. It would be, I would be inappropriate to say that we have without collaborating with all the key people. But those are really great questions and something we're starting to prepare for.
Thank you. Mrs. Snell?
Okay, a few questions. I just want to reiterate what you have told us before. That's my first, is a statement that I've gotten several letters where people, emails where people have said, can students choose to take pass or credit? Credit, no credit, can they, or can they choose letter grades? And I wanted to verify that we have to do the same thing district-wide or colleges won't recognize it.
Correct. And so, yeah, let me emphasize that point because it's very important. When universities look at transcripts of our students in Newport Mesa, what I have been informed is that they don't want to see two systems. Because how do you handle that? Because they're prepared to give a student who has credit all the eligibility requirements. But when you have some students showing up with grades and some with credit, how do you interpret that? And I cannot speak for every college or university. Okay, I want to be very clear. But I did hear in some of the guidance that I sought out was the fact that, you know, universities may say, you know, we don't know what to do with this. So, we don't want to take any chance to put our students at a disadvantage. But let me just give you a hypothetical here. What if we have some students with grades who earned an A and some students who show up with the credit on their transcript? And now the university says, well, you know, we can't take both, so we're going to treat them all as credit. That would be a really bad situation for our students. So, we don't want to take that chance. I can't speak for every college or university, not only in California, but across the nation. And so, we believe that what we have provided is grades with enough safety nets in there and making that decision very clear for our district. And I do want to add one more piece to this, and that is allowing students to choose based on evidence and the advice that we're getting from researchers, is not a good option, because there is equity issues with that. So we did not go that, go that direction for those reasons.
Okay, thank you. My second question is, and I think I've asked this before, reduction of the graduation requirements by, you know, ten points or twenty in some cases, is that follow the individual student? I mean, I understand doing that for the senior because they're about to graduate. But if you're a freshman, do you have that same reduction as you, when you become a senior?
Right. So the idea behind the reduction, all students, is that students who are facing hardships right now, we know they all are, that it's not just seniors facing hardship. It's juniors, sophomores, freshmen, and so on. They're all facing hardship. And we wanted to give the option for students, no matter what grade level you are, to be able to drop this as a, as a way to focus on your other classes. I believe that tradition or practice, that your junior year is probably one of your toughest academic years. But as a sophomore, you're also working hard to build up that GPA. And freshmen are just freshmen. They're entering the high school life. So, you know, there's a rationale and a benefit for each grade level to take advantage of this option. And if we're really wanting to do that for all students, then this is the way it is. We can't have a system where, well, some juniors have a two-hundred-and-thirty and some have a twenty. And to have a two-tiered system like that is unfortunately just not possible. So we want to provide this opportunity and the support for all students. And that's the value and the principle that we base that decision on. Again, it's not to eliminate elective opportunities. And keep in mind, we are, we are not only exceeding the state in terms of our graduation requirement, we are at the top of Orange County in terms of total credit requirement, and we're at the top of the county in terms of our elective credit requirements. So moving this down by ten credits, we felt was reasonable under the circumstances.
Okay, thank you, Russell. Mrs. Snell, that got your answer. So, Mrs. Anderson?
Thank you. My question is for, well, first of all, thank you. I think that that was really succinct and helpful. And I think it would be awesome, too, if we can put that report on the website so parents can review that at their leisure, and students, I'm sure, are very interested. My question is, and I posed this before, what is our thinking with the possibility of putting a pass for elementary students? So instead of it just being blank at the end of the year, that there would be a pass that all, all parents, when they get the report card, would know, okay, my child is moving.
Here's the, here's the tracking ID.
All of the parents would know, my child is moving forward, my child is moving on. Because one of the things that I've seen in the past with, like, some of the teacher comments, I think they have so many to do at certain times. And I think, like, if they're really specific, that would be awesome. Instead of, you know, since we're not grading, but I just, from parents, they've heard, like, is it just going to be blank? Like, what does that mean? So what is the thinking with that? And are we, is it possible to possibly put that on the report cards?
Well, the rationale behind this is that, obviously, this are difficult times to assess students. And there was long, deep discussions at the elementary level, as well as input from NMFT, of the challenges of making that happen. And also following the guidance that we've received, that, you know, giving grades, or in our case, marks of one through four, was very difficult. The idea of pass is unfortunately still a form of grading or giving a mark. It might not be as high-level as the numerical marks, but it is a form of grading. And we felt that the most meaningful thing to do is to provide comments in a narrative form to the students, to the parents. And we felt that's really what this is about. And we also know that we have marks, as well as comments, in the first two trimesters. But it would have been very difficult and challenging to give any form of grading at this point. So this was the recommendation we got, not only from our site principal, but also input from NMFT and teachers.
Can I ask a follow-up question? So if there's, if there's a student who maybe their parent's health is at risk right now, or in jeopardy, or something goes on in the family, and the child is not able to be online very often, their attendance is patchy, I mean, they would not necessarily have a lot of teacher comment either. So I just, I mean, my concern is that a parent could get a report card, you know, in July or whenever they're sent out, and it's just practically empty. And so I just, I'm just concerned about that.
Martha, you're on mute.
Mrs. Anderson, is that it? Ms. Yelsey, you're next. Don't forget to unmute. And take your hands down if you have, unless you have more questions.
Thank you. First of all, I want to say I really appreciate that you have worked so hard and so quickly on getting this done. Because I think every student, every parent I've talked to, they want to know what the grading system is going to be for the rest of the semester. And whatever it is, they can move on from there. And I think now, once we have something, that they'll be able to do that. And I've said this before, all normalcy and consistency has been taken away from all our students, and they do understand grades. So when we tell them they're getting grades, students understand that. So as Dr. Navarro said at the beginning about one of the other topics we were talking about, there's no easy answer. There's no easy answer about any topic we're dealing with right now. And this is just another one of them. So we know there's people who are going to like what we're doing. We know there's people who aren't going to like it. They would just like pass/fail. Maybe you'll like parts of it. But I think it's just important that we have a system and stick to it. And then I just want to mention, it's not part of the grading, but I think we all know the largest unintended consequence of this distance learning and what we're doing is going to be the mental health aspect for our kids. And I don't think it's just going to be this semester. I think it's going to be, if we return to school, it's going to continue into the fall. And so I hope, I know Sarah's working on it, she talked about it, that we are continuing to develop a robust system, not only for the kids now, and they need that, but as we move along, because I'm really concerned about what this entire pandemic is doing to our kids.
Absolutely, Ms. Yelsey. And I know our support staff from Student Services and at the sites, they are already supporting students and families in this difficult time. And you're absolutely right, this is going to continue on for quite some time.
Ms. Black?
Don't forget, you're on mute, Mrs. Black.
I, yeah, I wanted to thank you also, but, and also mention, I know you're going to be meeting, you know, in a really great, you know, committee, you know, that I believe is well-rounded, very robust with, you know, the different participants. And I appreciate that. And, but I also want, if you would, carry that into that meeting. I really want to make sure we support kids right now, you know, between now and the end of school. And we, our district, we're going to have the extra time, you know, in June. And I, you know, I really, I think we have enough staff out there, but I would call for volunteer teachers and maybe some of the aides that are in the classroom supporting our teachers normally. You know, that maybe we could do some way of reaching out to the kids. For instance, if we had, if I were a teacher, and I had thirty kids, but I noticed that, you know, five of my kids were inconsistent, they're not coming, or that there was some kind of challenge or whatnot, it would be nice if I were that classroom teacher to be able to reach out somewhere and say, hey, you know, I have some students that, you know, I have concerns about. They're not getting it. They need more help. I know we're not talking about tutors, but I'm almost at that point where I think that connection is probably going, in the long run, going to be better for going into the summer and the fall. In other words, I think if we can figure out what's going on with them, you know, and our teachers usually have a pretty good finger on the pulse. So they probably do know what, you know, the student needs. But I just, you know, I do know we have staff out there that would love help, you know. And, and I'm not sure, we don't volunteer anything, so I know, I know better than to say that. But I do believe, you know, people, they're getting paid, you know, already. And, but I would like to, you know, at least utilize their service. And I know that they would, you know. You know, so anyway, I just really like that to go into the meeting. So, you know, so that we can find out what the teachers think about. Because I, I've talked to several, and they all would really support that support.
Right. Thank you. And that's really what this is, and why I think you've heard from so many people, how people are stepping up. And, you know, we will, all of our resources, almost all hands on deck. You've got people who want to help, and help now, between now and the end of the year. So end up with as few incompletes as possible.
Right. No, I'm, so I appreciate you sharing that.
Ms. Matwaye, do you have any comments or questions or anything, or are you reserving?
Thank you for asking. I can't put my hand up mechanically, so I'll just wave. A lot of thought has gone into this, and the recognition that a lot of thought still needs to go into this is, is good. And the fact that we, we need to commit to our teachers and parents that we will report out to them as soon as the decision has been made, in case something comes up in between meetings, that, okay, here's this decision, we can move forward, you can relax about this, we're going to do that. Here's the dates for summer school, we figured out when they are. Just anything to help relieve the stress and the unknown for, for parents who are teachers, and teachers who are teachers. It is, it is crazy times, but presentation was great. It's very clear and easy to understand. And we're going to do the best we can. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll pipe in. You all know where I stand on this, and I will, I will address it in two sections. I applaud us for looking at the graduation requirements. I think overall, the opportunity that presents itself with the expansion of, of electives is monumental. I think, I think we'll see great things happen. I don't think we'll see a decrease. I think that the distance learning opportunity has, will provide us opportunities to expand our electives. I harken back to the years when Costa Mesa High School offered German, four years of German, and I had friends that took the German classes. And they died because they couldn't sustain them, because when they get to the third and fourth year, they dropped to ten kids. And that was not, could not be fit into the master schedule. But with this opportunity of distance learning, and the opportunity for students to participate across the district and fill a class in German, or in whatever, is monumental. And I think that our principals are, are ready to embrace the concept. We already have it in our construction technology class at Estancia. So I'm excited about that, and I don't think that we are going to lose our, our electives, but only enhance them. In regards to the, the A through C, I am, I'm still absolutely opposed to it. I think the concept that we need to return to some sort of normalcy, it's not normal. We heard from our students tonight that talked about that now, not only are they not having normal classroom time, it's down to forty-five minutes versus the normal ninety-minute block scheduling. They're now having what they're calling the homework pylon. Because some teachers believe that they've got all this spare time. And so because of not having sports or whatever, that now they're having homework pylon. And that they're facing stress that they're getting homework, more homework than they've ever had. And now they're also not only doing that, but they're teaching themselves. They're doing reading, and you, we've heard it from, that they're, you know, sometimes, some are really engaging teachers, and some of them are just reading and having you read a book. So it's not. I'm concerned about the expectation that these students have the wherewithal, the self-awareness, and the capacity to reach out and ask for help. Yes, we have office hours. But it really is, it's upon the students to pick up and attend the office hours, to seek extra help. And we all know kids at this age don't necessarily have that self-awareness or that self-capacity. We also know that students don't have the focus. We've seen that, because we've got students sitting on a bed, zooming on a bed. Or we've got students sitting in a corner, or we've got students sitting outside, or we've got students sitting. It's not normal, and they don't know how to focus, and they're having difficulty. So if we're doing anything, we're grading them on, they can master their technology, sorta, kinda, because if we've heard, sometimes they can't get on, sometimes they get kicked off. They've mastered all of the other, other the items. And again, my feeling is, God bless them, you either, you either got credit, or you got an incomplete. I actually asked, because I don't, I don't mind teachers giving grades. I'm absolutely in support of that. I think that teachers have the right and, and should. And I think kids ought to know where they're going and how they're doing. So I have no problems. My question is, can there not be two sys, can there not be, the teachers are giving grades, but on the official report card or the official transcript, and that's primarily for our, our seniors this year, it's a, it's a credit incomplete? Now, in the, in the future years, there is nothing that prevents us from flipping the switch if, in fact, schools or the, or the colleges change their mind and say, well, we want grades. If we have those grades already posted and teachers are posting grades, is it difficult to say, oh, okay, now we're switched, because we have the grades, that we switch back to the actual, the actual grades? I mean, you know, I think it's a compromise that, that satisfies all of it, because all four of, all four of the, the, the partners that you talked about, CSU and the UC system are accepting pass/fail or credit, no credit. And they're doing that for their own college kids. Challenge success recommends no, credit incomplete. Crescendo group recommends credit, no, incomplete. And so many of, and many of the Orange County school districts, you said it was, it's a split. The ones that we're often compared to, which is Tustin, Huntington Beach, and Irvine Unified, are doing pass, no credit, or credit incomplete, which, one of those two. The schools farther away are not, and I acknowledge that. There are counties, for example, Santa There are counties, for example, Santa Clara County, which is part of Palo Alto, we like to compare ourselves in some respects to Palo Alto, their entire county, and the guidance from their county superintendent was all the districts in Santa Clara are at the credit incomplete. And that's, that's what they're recommending to all of it. Our, our county has not done that. Again, I believe that we do great harm with an A through C. It's not normal, and we're putting added stress, especially when we're talking, when we hear, we hear from these students, it's not normal, and kids are getting inconsistent and uneven levels of education. And to tell our kids that you're getting a C, and possibly it's not really a C, or getting the kids to a B and it's not really a B, because of, as you acknowledge, the learning gap, is that doing a disservice to our kids as well? Versus a credit which doesn't, it stands for, you completed the course requirements. It doesn't, it's not pejorative, it doesn't make a distinction between how well you did. Teachers can give that, they can give that feedback, and they can give those grades. They're just not reported on the official, on the, on the transcript, the district, the report card, or on a transcript. That's my position. And so I will be voting no on this. Unfortunately, I have to vote no on the entire thing because it's in one motion, but other than that, I don't see any, any other lights. And so if somebody could make the motion, please.
So moved. So moved.
That's Mrs. Snell moved?
I'm sorry, Mrs. Snell, yeah.
I said, Mrs. Snell? There are seconds?
Second.
Mrs. Yelsey seconded. Roll call, please.
Ms. Flor?
No.
Ms. Yelsey?
Yes.
Ms. Black?
Yes.
Ms. Barto?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Snell?
Yes.
Ms. Matoye?
Yes.
Motion passed as six, six-one. Thank you. Moving on to item seventeen B, which is InterQuest. Dr. Navarro?
Yes.
There is a public comment?
We actually have a Sarah?
We read it already.
Pardon me?
We haven't read it.
Oh, sorry.
We read the seventeen B one. Somebody read that already.
No.
There's one additional.
There were two, and we didn't read either of them.
Okay, let me get back to there. We will go there to the public comment. It was from Wendy Lee's. I believe that one read. Mrs. Matoye, you read that one?
No, I did not.
Okay, read it again then.
I read the seventeen C one. This is from Mrs. Lee's seventeen B. Approval of this would be financially imprudent, no kids in school. Please don't pass and reevaluate when school is back in session. Approving this would waste money. Please approve tutoring, enrichment online programs for parents instead. Save the money and plan to have more aides in the classroom next year. Use money for summer school. Don't waste taxpayer money on dogs. Spend money on mental health programs so kids don't do drugs in the first place.
That's it. Thank you.
There's one more. There's one more from Manuel Chavez.
It's not on my list, and I know I got it, but I don't see it on my.
Do you want me to read it?
Yes.
Yeah, please.
All right, it's from Manuel Chavez, and it says, Dear Superintendent Navarro and Honorable School Board Members, thank you for your leadership during these difficult times. I am reaching out today regarding the approval of agreement with InterQuest for using detection canines in our NMUSD campuses. We are all going to face difficult economic challenges due to the coronavirus, and I implore that instead of using our limited money into hiring detection canines, we invest in counselors. Our students balance academic courses, sports, and extracurricular activities to be competitive with their university applications. The stress of balancing these activities can lead some students to substance abuse. Should a student fall into that category, instead of sending them to juvenile hall, effectively ruining their lives, we should have counselors or support systems that enable the students to better deal with stress. Our students are handling even more stress than I did ten years ago as an Estancia student. Once again, I ask that we do not invest in detection canines, but rather in some restorative policies for our Newport Macy Unified School District students. Warm regards.
Flor, you're muted.
Dr. Jocum, I'm turning it over to you. You're gonna turn it over to Phil, right?
I am. Thank you. I appreciate the, the comments. This item was moved to discussion action to have such a conversation regarding where the canine detection program fits in with the district's vision of how we have kids' safety and also their mental health and social emotional learning going on. So Dr. De Avistino has been in charge of contact with this program for several years, and he has a couple of slides that explain it, and then we're happy to, to take any questions.
Good evening, President Flor, Vice President Yelsey, members of the board, Dr. Navarro, Cabinet, and virtual guests. I hope you are all well, and your families and loved ones are well, too. It's good to see all of you. Thank you for allowing the opportunity for Student Services to give a brief presentation on the InterQuest program. As you know, this is a program that involves one of the preeminent canine detection programs in the country. They've been working with us for over seven years. I've, I've had the experience of seeing InterQuest work both as a site principal and then as the Director of Student Services, as you know. InterQuest came on board about a year or two prior to my becoming the Director of Student Services. Just briefly, to go over the process with you. The contract specifies forty-five visits in a year. We only pay for the visits that we, that we actually have. So if, if we do not, if we do not incur forty-five visits in a year, then those are backed out of the costs of, of the contract. On average, secondary schools average about three to five visits per year. Sometimes we get a visit by a canine and a handler, and the school just doesn't want to do that visit that day. We, we always give the principals the opportunity to say we're not prepared to have a visit today. And in some cases, that, that handler may call my office and then go to another site, or, or they would, or that would then get added on at a different date. We have outlined with the principals a randomized process, expectation of randomness when classrooms are selected. And no dogs and handlers go out onto the campus without an administrator and a campus safety personnel also present. The expectation is that once a classroom is selected, the students leave the classroom, and the canine and the handler and the administrator go into the room, and they passively search the bookbags and desk areas of students. We do not search the desk areas of teachers or staff, simply is to search student possession. And then when the dog alerts, the property is, is sequestered, and then the individual to whom that property belongs is, is then taken to the office, and then there is some further questioning. We had over four thousand students passively searched last year. We anticipate about the same number of students this year. When I was starting as Director of Student Services, there were about seven thousand students that were searched. There was a greater frequency of, of searches than we have today. And this, in the past year, there were forty-five alerts. And of all those alerts, thirty-eight percent of them led to the confiscation of illicit drugs. The second largest number of alerts is residual odors, and that would be an odor that the dog comes upon that corresponds to a drug or a controlled substance, but there are no drugs or controlled substances. And then to kind of give you some greater detail on that, as you can see here, of the forty-five searches that we had in the two thousand thirteen, I'm sorry, I apologize, the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year, sixteen of them illicit drugs, I moved my, there we go, twelve of them residual odors. We had some hits that did not result in an inspection. We had one hit last year that did not result in an inspection. So that would be in an area where, so for example, the dog might be going down a hallway and alerts to a trash can. That might not be a formal inspection if we didn't find anything there, or the inspection of a student. We do have tobacco-related hits as well. And then I also want to point out that medication and gunpowder are also types of substances that the canines have been trained to detect. This is as much for us, I believe, a statement about keeping our campuses just from illicit substances, but also in the area of weapons that, guns in particular. That could be something that the dogs alert to, and then also prescription medications. I was mentioning to someone earlier, the, the capabilities of these dogs is so great that they can sniff through closed cars, closed car doors. We currently do not have the dogs going out to parking lots at this point. They could do that, but we would, before we would expand the service in any capacity whatsoever, we would obviously seek board approval for that. So currently, the contract stands as it has been for the last couple of years, which is to do forty-five visits per year, an average of three to five visits per secondary school site, so that would be middle schools and high schools. And also wanted to point out that when you look at the number of hits that the dogs make or have made, and again, this is data from last year, because the district closure has not allowed us to get the data yet from, from this year. We will be getting summary data at the end of May, as we typically do over the past two years. But I want to point out that the vast majority of hits result in some type of non-disciplinary action. And that would be either a student being questioned and then counseled as to why they might have a residual odor on their, on their bookbag or on their, on a piece of clothing. And then also, you know, medication would typically not result in a disciplinary incident. So a, a student who is in possession of a prescription medication would be directed to give that medication to, to the school nurse. You know, I believe that when you look at overall the program, I think that it is a deterrent to alcohol and weapons, drugs, controlled substances. And I think it serves as a safety as well as a drug mitigation intervention. I want to point out that we continue and have for some time adopted the policy that if a student's, if, if a student is caught with drugs or under the influence as a first offense, that we expect to do some kind of other means of correction or restorative justice. In many cases, that means putting a student on a contract after a brief suspension, and then giving them drug counseling. In some cases, we have one recovery on our campuses, and we have suspension exchange programs at Estancia, for example, and at Corona del Mar, where if students are first-time offenders, they have the opportunity to have that suspension waived. And if they serve, you know, a, a number of sessions with one recovery. But in the, in the larger scheme of your overall philosophy towards discipline, which has two large components to it, the component of support and the component of accountability, we really believe that this fits into the accountability piece of the overall discipline philosophy that is in and of itself restorative in nature. Restorative culture and restorative practices require students to not only make amends and through some form of accountability, but also for them to be open to support and guidance so that they don't make similar decisions or decisions in the future. And so I do believe that this program is consistent with your balancing of compassion and discipline, support and accountability. And the recommendation for Student Services, from Student Services this evening, is that you do approve this contract specifically to the concerns that were raised about the, again, the, the cost. This could be amended, given the length of the district closure at the start of the school year next year. We could, again, reduce the number of visits within the contract itself, which would not, not bring us closer to the thirty thousand dollar amount that we are definitely not going to exceed. So once again, thank you for the time and allowing me to present this. We are recommending approval of this item at this time.
Okay, thank you, Phil. We have two hands up, and I'm sure that more will come up. Ms. Snell, oh, and now I have a couple of other ones, hold on. So Ms. Snell, and then I have Ms. Anderson, and then I have Ms. Barto.
I would like to move to approve this contract. And if I get a second, I'd like to speak to my motion.
I'll second it. Dana Black seconded.
Okay. I would like to approve this for three reasons. Number one, we've all talked about the mental health issues of our students with this pandemic and being stuck at home, some without supervision. And I truly believe when they come back to school, fingers crossed, in the fall or the late summer, that there will be more issues than ever with, with tobacco, with drug abuse, with all kinds of things. And I don't, I don't think that we should let up on the pedal. We need to continue with this program. It's gonna be more important than ever. And secondly, there doesn't seem to be a negative because you are charged with however many visits you get, and they will back out if you don't get enough, although I believe there will be, we'll be able to do forty-five. So that's secondly. Thirdly, I think it's important to continue this relationship with this company. We've had a relationship with this company. It's part of, it's part of encouraging businesses, and they are certainly needed, and I would like to move forward with it.
Okay, Ms. Barto. Barto, did you remember to put yourself on, on mute? I can't, we can't hear you.
Sorry, I couldn't get to my, I have two screens, so I couldn't get to my unmute button. I was like moving back and forth. I think it's a fair point that we don't have to use it that often. I just, I just wonder if with kids, I don't know, I'm so torn because I just feel like with coming back as it is, are we causing more, you know, trauma because they've been home, they're stressed, and now they've got these dogs there? So I, I'm really torn on this, and I, especially with how little we will be, hopefully not, but there's a good chance that we'll be missing a bunch of school, and approving this, I don't know, that we need this this year.
Okay, Ms. Anderson.
Hello, thank you. I appreciate you moving it to discussion action because I have lots of questions. Phil answered some of my questions earlier. One of my concerns is from looking at the comparison from when this started in two thousand thirteen. It looks like the first year, there were thirty percent disciplinary issues and seventy percent non-disciplinary, yet now we are at forty-four percent disciplinary and fifty-six non. So if our goal is to mitigate and deter- So if our goal is to mitigate and deter, I don't necessarily see that that is happening through this particular program contract concept. One of my concerns also is it looks like this is a company in Texas. So do we fly them out here to come and check our schools? Do we incur the price of having someone do that forty-five times a year? Is that part of the fee?
Would you, I'm sorry, Ms. Anderson, would you like me to speak to those now or?
Sure, yeah.
So to your first point, you know, we had about seven thousand students when the program started. We had about seven thousand students that were passively searched. So your sample size was much, much higher. And because the hits skew non-disciplinary consequences, when you have a much larger sample size of seven thousand hits in the thirteen, fourteen school year, it would make a lot of sense that we would have many, many more non-disciplinary hits. I think the program has been dialed in to where now with, with less numbers of students passively searched, you're getting, you're getting a closer alignment between disciplinary and non-disciplinary incidents, but it still skews towards non-disciplinary. So I think that might be a statistical.
What are the rates of students now?
Pardon me?
If it started with seven thousand, what are the rate, how many students did they do last year?
About, I think it was about forty-five hundred or four thousand.
Okay.
And to answer your second question, no, the parent company is in Texas, but the satellite company is in San Diego, based out of San Diego. The handlers come up from San Diego. We are not charged for mileage. We are simply charged a fat flat fee per visit.
Okay. Another question I have is do we consider this contract essential in the light of possible school closures for part of the time next year, possibly even limited student attendance and a reduced budget? Is it considered essential?
Yeah, I, I, that is your, within your purview, the Board of Education, to make those kinds of decisions. I would suggest that the commitment of the Board of Education and the districts to keep drugs off of our schools, to make a statement about how we should not be having drugs on our school campuses is met by this program and has been met by this program for many years. But certainly you make a very fair point in, given the, the circumstances that we are in. But I, again, my position and the position of student services would be it is a critical component to our overall holistic support and accountability approach to dealing with drugs and controlled substances in our community and among our students.
Okay, I have a follow-up question to that. What are the other ways that we are preventing student drug possession on our campuses?
Well, you know, that speaks to an issue of the extent to which we are proactive and to the extent that we are reactive. And I would, I would argue that the programs that we have with the National Council on Drug Addiction, the Waymakers Program that we wanted to start this year at the middle school, the One Recovery Program that's been in place for years, are all programs that talk about the dangers of drugs and alcohol and take a proactive approach to telling students that drugs are bad. But, but there is a segment of, of a student population in every school district up and down the state that has unfortunately succumbed to the use of drugs and controlled substances. And the education code and the laws of California, as you know, are very clear on this. Education Code forty-nine hundred specifically states that possession under the influence, that these are disciplinary consequences for these kinds of choices. And so while we have adopted a very compassionate and holistic view towards these kinds of choices, there still needs to be a balance between support and accountability.
Okay, yeah, I, for me, compassion is not necessarily the word that I would use to describe the presence of trained drive dogs on our school campuses. What are we doing to mitigate the anxiety and the triggering that happens for students, especially students of color, that may occur simply by being on campus and seeing these dogs?
Well, so any student that experiences anxiety or depression for any reason whatsoever can be, can be addressed through the specialized, certificated personnel that we have on campus, our counselors, our social workers, our behavior specialists, individual teachers. Every, every adult in the district is committed to making sure that students feel comfortable and safe in school. I would argue that this is one of the ways we try to make students feel comfortable and safe about being in school, especially students who fear other students who might be using drugs and alcohol and erratic behaviors that come from the use of those drugs and, and controlled substances. So in that sense, I think it is a complicated sort of dynamic. But, you know, when I speak to compassion, I speak to the issue of the other programs, the Aspire, the One Recovery. This is definitely an accountability measure. It's a system to promote accountability. It's a system that I believe is unbiased because the dogs who are in the classrooms are not, they don't know whose bag they are sniffing, they simply are going up and down the aisles. But to speak again to the issue of anxiety and depression that students feel, I mean, at any time that a student is experiencing anxiety and depression, for whatever reason, and if there's anxiety that comes from this and a student presents themselves as saying, you know what, I'm really anxious right now, I don't, not feeling really good. I would assume that the approach by the administrator who is, who is with the handler would be to get that student some support right away, to go talk to a counselor.
Yeah, my concern is though, if like we are creating that scenario by bringing dogs on campuses that can trigger students. So my follow-up then too is one of the things that came up in the Human Relations Task Force, that was, there was a petition and one of the things was the overpolicing of students of color and the trauma and some of the inequality that some students have reported in the past. I know I've shared with you, I've heard multiple concerns from parents and students at a few of our schools that it seems to them that the searches are not done in a completely randomized way and there have been reports of students being present in the classrooms. So how can we ensure that the administrators, the SROs are assisting and leading non-biased and randomized searches going forward?
So Ms. Anderson, you have my word that if you do approve this tonight, that I will revisit these issues with the school principals. We will, we will put out a documented practice, recommended best practice that has been expected and understood of principals. We will revisit it again at the beginning of the year and we'll make sure that that is, is published to all the secondary administrators to ensure the randomization of searches, to ensure that the students are not in the classroom. These things that you are mentioning, as I told you earlier this afternoon, these have not come to my level. But if they had come to my level, they are not, they are not practices that are consistent with what we're looking in this program. So certainly if that has been happening, I want to get to the bottom of it. But again, you know, the, the program, when done correctly and done in a, in a way that is randomized, I do believe provides an effective deterrent as well as a intervention for the scourge that is, is drugs and controlled substances in our communities.
I appreciate that. I have two quick other, so one is in your experience, do we have an aligned disciplinary policy and practice about first time drug offenses across our district? And do we have alignment across the district related to second and third offenses? I'm concerned about that.
Yeah, I think we are, I think we are more aligned than we ever have been. But as a district, as you know, we have always given latitude to site principals to make certain kinds of determinations as it relates to discipline. Is, is it possible that the freak, the number of days of suspension for a first offense coupled with counseling might be different from one site to the other? Yes, I do think that more than ever before with the integration of the Student Services Division and the Ed Division and the integration of meetings and conversations around alignment of values, alignment of practices, that that's been happening more this year than ever before. And I'm, I'm hopeful and I'm, and I'm very buoyed by the fact that these conversations continue. So, you know, good is never enough and the enemy of great is, is good. So can we do more? I think absolutely. But I don't think that we are at a point where the inconsistency, should they exist, preclude us from considering this valuable program.
Okay, thank you for that. One of the other things that I would like, when I was looking up this item, there, it looks like the board policy has not been reviewed and updated since 2009. It's Board Policy five-one-four-five dot one-two. And so one of my questions is for the board, if we can have a conversation at some point with the secondary principals, with the Human Relations Task Force and amongst ourselves as to if that is still the best policy for us. I know there have been a lot of updates also based on the change to marijuana laws in the state of California. A ten-year-old policy seems like it's ready for an update. So that is something else that I would like to do. And I, I really would like us to use this great framework for grading. Equity, whole child, do no harm. Those are, I think, three great foundational values and I would love to see those really well-equipped across student services. So that is all. Thank you for answering all my questions, Phil.
Thank you.
Great, we have Ms. McQuay.
Thank you. I figured out how to raise my hand. I have to say first, I want to admit I am a self-labeling nerdy geek, goody-two-shoe person when I was in school. But that being said, I would have been very comforted knowing that dogs came on campus occasionally to search for drugs, to get them out of the school so that I didn't have to worry about them. And when I was in school, even back in the dark ages, that was a concern and a worry. And I would have, I would have felt better. So while someone else may have their anxiety up, my anxiety would have been lowered. And yes, it was, you can't say that wasn't. And then I have another question just to make sure I'm, I'm confirming it. The goal of the company is to use the dogs when students are not present. Is that correct, Mr. or Dr. DiAgostino?
I'm sorry, could you say that again? The goal is to?
To utilize the dogs in a situation when the students are not present. So they would go through the hallway.
It's not, yeah, it's not just a goal, Ms. McQuay, it's, it's an expectation that the students are separated from the property in the classroom and that the dogs go up and down the aisles as was evidenced in the pictures that you saw with the presentation.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, that, but if that's not happening, I agree with you. Someone should get the news up as far as your level so that you could take care of it. Thank you, that was it.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Snow, do you have another question? Or your buttons on?
Let me see, no, I don't think I do. I think that's it. I think I forgot to put my hand down, sorry.
I'll make a statement and just a question. I believe that the drug sniffing dogs are a proactive approach. Let's not, let's be real clear. Every seven minutes, an individual dies of an overdose in this country. Every seven minutes, a life is lost because of an addiction issue. Most of you know me, some of you are new to me, but I am intimately involved and intimately aware of the hazards of drug and alcohol use. I have five children and all of them are in some stage of recovery. Some are celebrating fourteen years, some are celebrating a year, some are at nine months. So I've been dealing with this for a long, long time. And when we are talking about kids' lives and we're talking about students, whatever we do is just one tool in the tool chest. All of the other programs, whether it be One Recovery or Waymakers, I look at them as reactive. They have, a situation has been identified and now we have kids that we're working with to correct. This is proactive. It's identifying students that may or may not have a problem and we're doing something about it. It also is, as Char mentioned, providing students an excuse to say, oh, I can't do that. I know that many kids don't have the self-awareness, don't have the capacity to, as Nancy Reagan used to say, just say no. They need some excuse, they need some other way to be able to say no because they don't want to look nerdy or they don't want to look whatever. And so I think this is one opportunity. It's also, we're not the only district in Orange County that uses them. Bullerton Union High School District has used drug sniffing dogs. When we first approached this, we also talked to the City of Newport Beach Police Department as well as the Costa Mesa Police Department, believe it or not, in terms of discussing this with their, the SROs at the time. So I mean, I think it's a well worth the expense. I think we all had questions about, oh, do we want to make sure that we, we, we don't want to overload one school? We want to make it consistent so that not one school was taking up all of it and, and calling them in all the time. Beginning, that was, that was what occurred. I think it's leveled out now and it's continuing to do that and we're seeing it, we're seeing a drop. There was a time when we did do searches on cars way back in the, back in the day. And you know what? We have certain, certain members of our employee staff are subject to drug and alcohol testing. Our bus drivers, there are random, there are random tests that we require. So this is, this is not unusual and Corona Del Mar years ago actually had their high schools, their football team did random drug testing that the parents paid for. We never got the results, it went directly to the parents, but we've done it in the past. And so I'm all for trying to make sure that we intervene on, on, on the behalf of children because this is what it is, it's an intervention. It's identifying the potential problem and getting them the help that they need in case they need it, whether they want it or not, so.
Call for the question?
You got it. Let me make sure that there's no other hand I, I have to go up on here. Ms. Anderson, your hand is still up. Do you have a final comment or anything?
I, I do, yeah. There's actually, you know, for me, one of the things that I'm concerned about is particularly for students of color within our district. In the past, some of these have done, some of these searches have not been done with an empty classroom. So I'm glad that we're going to work. To me, it needs to be beyond an expectation, it needs to be policy, it needs to be the standard practice in all of our schools. I personally had a ton of students when I was at Estancia who got forty-two-ten. I remembered it really dramatically, our whole soccer team got kicked off pretty much. We, if there had been dogs, that wouldn't have stopped what happened. So I would prefer that we had specific. Right, so dogs don't help those kind of situations, that's what I'm saying. So I think there are other ways that we can prevent student substance abuse. And I'm also concerned because in the conditions of children for Orange County that the last three years Newport Beach has the highest level of juvenile arrests in the county. So there are a lot of other factors to me. It's not just that here's one mode of helping not have drugs on campus. So I, those are some of my other concerns, thank you.
And Ashley, just for information, that soccer team was kicked off because they were out of town on a, on an event and there was alcohol.
I know, very, yeah.
It was not, it was not because there were alcohol on campus. They were off campus and they were at a, at a soccer tournament in Santa Barbara.
Yes.
So the question's been called for. Roll call please.
Floor?
Yes.
Ms. Yelsey?
Yes.
Ms. Black?
Yes.
Ms. Barto? Ms. Barto?
She's, she's probably unmuting.
Just go like this.
I can't see her.
He's voting now.
He's voting no.
No.
She's no.
Ms. Anderson?
No.
Ms. Snell?
Yes.
And Ms. Matoye?
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Moving on to, I think that's it, right, guys?
Ms. Flor, we have the resolution consent calendar to go back to.
Did I miss that?
I thought we did that.
No, we skipped it. The holidays.
Oh, the holiday, yeah, the holidays. Thank you. I completely skipped it. Okay. Moving back to resolution consent, item-
Oh, look at that.
Item 16. Okay. Ms. Black, you want to read the all items?
Oh, yeah.
Ms. Black, you're on mute. Ms. Black?
As with the consent calendar, all items listed under the resolution consent calendar are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted by the board in one roll call vote and will be deemed the same vote for each of the items.
Okay. Okay. So under the resolution consent calendar, we have Resolution 180420, Designating the Observance of Washington Day on February 16th, 2021, and Lincoln Day on February 16th, Resolution 190420, Recognizing California Day of the Teacher, May 13th of 2020, and National Teacher Appreciation Week of May 4th through May 8th of 2020. Adoption of Resolution 200420 is recommended observing the day of Wednesday, May 6th, as National School Nurse Day and the week of May 4th through 8th as National School Week, Nurse Week. Is that, I believe that's it, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So may I have a motion, please? Oh, you moved it. Ms. Matoye, you moved it?
I'll second.
And Ms. Anderson seconded. A roll call, please.
Ms. Flor?
Yes.
Ms. Yelsey?
Yes.
Ms. Black?
Yes.
Ms. Barto?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Snell?
Yes.
Ms. Matoye?
Yes.
Okay. Moving back over to the last item on the agenda is Dr. Navarro has requested a budget study session.
That should be so happy.
Well, I have to tell you, I think that in listening to everything I'm learning about the budget is that may, maybe too soon. I'd like Jeff to weigh in on that because I think what we're going to get is a budget on June 1st that is just the budget so that the legislators get their pay. And then the real budget's not going to be coming until August. Jeff, you want to chime in?
Yeah, that's probably, that's, that's a correct perspective. I think that, that the state doesn't really know what, what they're doing, but however right now, they are, they're projecting, they are in trouble with the capital T. They're projecting a $35 billion deficit. The county just lowered our revenue estimate for this year, not 2021, but for 1920 by $6 million. And so this is really a fast-moving recession here and it's going to require some sort of response where we are-
I talked to Rachel for three hours.
Where we're-
You're working on your midterm.
Looking at our cash right away. We're looking at things we can delay or push out. We're looking at various kinds of ways of saving things in terms of levels of service and then perhaps possibly cuts.
So we could do something in May, but it would be basically a basics about budgeting. There would be very little financial alignment to what we're talking about. I would recommend that we actually wait until we see what happens when they adopt the budget. Maybe there'll be some indicators there about what direction it's going to be heading in the summer. But it's a, this is a very unusual year, really unusual year. And so, you know, if this were a normal year, I'd say, hey, this is the right time to do it. The May revise would be out. We'd have a lot of great information, but I don't think that's going to be happening this year. So my recommendation is maybe we talk about doing something in late June or, or middle of June.
So the reason that I asked to put it on the agenda was because I've been on the board now for almost a little over a year and a year and a half and we haven't had a bud- a budget study session. So one of the things that I would like to do is for us to have a study session to discuss what are possible areas that we will need to cut. I feel like as a board, we have not had the opportunity since I've been on to talk through what has happened in the past. There was an embezzlement. What had to be cut then? What are essentials? What do we really like, what are we hearing? But also, how can we be thinking proactively rather than waiting? There are often things that come up with our district. There could be something else that happens in the summer and we push it back. So even if it is a two-hour study session to talk about where we are now and anything that we possibly could cut or need to be thinking through, I would like to have, we, we had a study session initially set up for April and we had discussed as a board, talking about the budget then, that somehow got skipped and we didn't even have that. So that's why I'm asking to have it in early May. So the timing isn't really directly related to COVID or the July 1st budget that wouldn't be in place normally.
Except that we don't know the magnitude of the reductions. So it would be premature to say, this is something you can cut, we, and then come back to you with the full picture later. Again, we would go over the basics, but we wouldn't have any real solid information about which, which way to go and what to recommend. Again, you know, I see Vicky's got her hand up, Martha?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, Vicky?
I realize that we don't have all the solid information, but if the recent past is in the indication, things move pretty fast. And I agree, I was thinking the same thing. We need to have Jeff present to us. I mean, it's more of a discussion than a presentation. We need to look at the budget. We need to, we're spending a lot of money for projects this summer and we just need to talk about it and talk about if we should be spending some of this money. We, we just need to talk about it. I think it's really important to talk about the future because when it's been, the future's been hitting us, the present's been hitting us really fast. And I'm concerned about, we're spending a lot of money and I, I think, I agree whole heartedly, we need to have a meeting, a study session.
Yeah. And Fred, I think part of it is also is we know right now that, yeah, money's going to be tight, but we also know, and I think that there's a two-pronged approach because we have some things coming up that are going to cost us more money than we expected, i.e. summer school. And what are we going to be providing our students in, in, in regards to closing the learning gap that we know is going to occur? And we know that that's going to occur in September and we know that we're going to have expenses in terms of right now to get those incompletes and those students up to par. So I think it's a two-pronged approach is, and for example, we know right now, we're not expending money on, yes, we're expending money on bus drivers, for example, but we're, we have a whole host of money, not a lot, but probably about $300,000, that we haven't sent kids to CIF this year. You know, there are certain things that we haven't spent money on because of the COVID. Now, is the intent is to try to squ- you know, keep that for next year? Or is, are we looking at having a conversation about what are the priorities? What is staff recognizing as the priorities? And having the board have some conversations about what, what the priorities are in terms of student and distance learning and how we're going to be doing that? We know that we're going to, Congress just released 18-point-some-odd billion dollars worth of aid that's supposed to go through K-12. And that means, you know, some money coming to California to support districts and purchasing all the way from hotspots and additional computers to professional development and that just passed. So I think that it's an opportunity for us to have a, you know, a heart-to-heart and say, what are the priorities between now and, you know, even if we're developing a plan on how to deal with it and, and coming up with some what-if scenarios and, and some priorities about, because we all, we all say the same thing every time we're going through. Keep it as far away as the classroom as possible when we talk about cuts. So we just have to have those conversations. I think that the old Girl Scout and a Boy Scout adage is be prepared, just so that we have an idea of what we're going to do. So if we can, we can start looking at that. You know, because I'm, I'm concerned that we don't have the plan in terms of, of how much it's going to cost us to, to do what we need to do to get our students and support our students. And that's where the, that's where the emphasis is going to be this summer in terms of that because, and we're not going to be having the programs like our arts program that we are so well-known for, for our kiddos this summer, if they, if they keep us close. And now Governor Newsom just talked about starting, school year may start July 1. Are you kidding me? I mean, that's what he just came out with today, right? July 1 may be the new school year? Hello?
Flor has a question, Martha, also.
Yeah. I see Shar.
Thank you. We also, we also, when there's a crisis, we come together, we make a decision, we get information. This is background. A lot of us need background and we don't, we won't have the time to get the background when everything hits so fast, just like you guys were spinning your wheels, making the plan, the governor opened his mouth, the plan had to change. So I would like the background. I would like the history. I, I lived through it as an employee through the 2008 recession. I lived through the embezzlement as an employee. I know how it worked then, but I want to look at it with the budget book in front of me and with the, the minds that have gone through it before. And so we can ask the questions that we'd like to ask and get some background into all of us so that we have a little more equal standing when we have to make these tough decisions. Regardless if we don't get the money we think we're going to get, we're going to have to make tough decisions. Some are tougher than others. So I, I think, I think we should have a meeting and I think it should be before the crisis hits.
Ms. Yelsey?
Yeah, I, I agree. I would like to have a meeting, not to make any decisions, just but because I think there, we're going to be shocked when we finally do get the budget or get and hear from what we're going to have for next year. And instead of having that shock come all at once, this would give us an opportunity to start thinking about it in terms of what are we looking at and what could we possibly consider cutting back on and what's essential. So I agree, I'd like, I'd like to just have a conversation.
Great.
Well, I don't think there's anything wrong with going over the structure of the budget so you can understand the structure and where the, what the operations are. I just don't want to, I don't want to give you a false impression that we'll know where to cut right away. But we could give you, we can go back and, you know, I bet Jeff could probably do this in his sleep, the structure and function of the budget so we can go over and you can see where that is. And then I think that one thing to always keep in mind during difficult budget times is the magnitude of the cut determines where you're going to make the cuts. And that's where you have to look at where, if it's a small cut, you can probably shave a few dollars here, shoot a few dollars there. It's a large cut, then we have to look at where most of the money is being spent. And that's where that cuts come from. So if we could do this in a later part of May, that would be fine as long as we are all in agreement that this is a function and structure of the budget because we won't be able to give you any advice as to where the cuts are coming. Eric?
Well, I think it's more of a Q and A. It's a, it's a, I don't think it's some big giant presentation. I think it's, let's, you know, open the budget book, let's talk about, ask our questions, talk about where do you think we could cut if we had to cut and that kind of thing. So I'm okay, I don't know, in the May.
Fred, or Jeff probably, doesn't he do a May revise? Isn't he doing a typical May revise? Doesn't he, isn't he, isn't he required to do a May revise?
He will do a revise, yes.
Required to do a May revise?
Yes, he, he will do a May revise and the state's expecting that that May revise is going to be stripped of anything new.
Right.
When?
That comes out-
My electronic hand doesn't work.
The electronic hand doesn't work.
I just was asking the question about the May revise, the 15th of the, of the calendar.
May 15?
He does have to do a May revise.
Does.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Barto and then Ms. Black?
So, I mean, since January, well, since the whole time we've been on the board, but especially in January, it was winter is coming, but it doesn't, you don't know how soon. And then all of a sudden, it's here. You know, we thought maybe it'd be the end of the year or whatever. But with that in mind, there are some things that you highlighted then that might be things that we would look to cutting with the graphs. I'd love to see how those play out now and not, I mean, obviously it could even get worse, but I'd just like to know how that January information compares with what we're looking at now.
Great. Okay. Ms. Black?
Yeah, I, I am a big fan of the budget and so, and, and I'm really grateful we have Jeff because he's a good teacher. He knows how to give it away. And I think it would behoove us as a board and, you know, our support staff, you know, cabinet and whatnot, to know where we're at right now and be able to ask those questions because it'll help me going in the future when I hear the rumors and whatnot, I'll at least know where we are now. And because the minute we publish anything, I know how the, how the budget works and how you put it together and all of that. But I would like to know, see the whites of Jeff's eyes and ask the question because he's really good at giving it away. And, you know, he would be a good teacher for it.
When he starts crying, it's a dead giveaway.
Okay. But it, we haven't touched base on it and, and we, and it might get pushed back, you guys, too. But it would be, you know, in our benefit to, to understand where we're at and what you guys are thinking, you know? What, what are, you know, what are the priorities?
Okay. Two, two questions I have is Jeff, we are required, whether the, whether the state passes or budget or not, what's our drop-dead date in approving a budget?
By June. You must approve one no later than the end of June.
End of, end of June, we must approve a budget.
Correct.
And the governor comes out with his May revise, May 15.
Correct.
Okay. Our next board meeting is May 19.
19.
So we propose, I mean, maybe I'm proposing that we have the budget study session on the 26th of May.
Looks good to me.
That's the day after, that's the day after Memorial Day. That will have, will have two weeks or at least a, a week from the May revise because I'm almost sure that comes out the 15th, prior to the 15th of May.
Can we have a study session prior to the May revise? Like a two-parter?
Yeah. More information, we have where the, where the governor's going potentially. I mean, they're going to have to hash it out, but at least we'll know where the gov- where he's looking at, where his priorities are. We'll have an, you know, if we're looking, I mean, most of the budget, let's be real honest, for us, it'll be in categoricals, but there aren't any categoricals. You know, we're, we're going to be suffering from the local property tax, but we're not going to be, because we're not under LCFF funding and they, I mean, they, I guess they could take back, but they already took back the 100 and, 100 and what, the basic aid premium. They were, they already have that. So what could they take away from us?
I, though, it would make sense if we had a- I, though, it would make sense if we had a conversation at least before because perhaps there's something we can advocate for legislatively. Maybe there's one big thing that as a school board, we would want to recommend and maybe ask Laguna Beach Unified if they also would back it. So I think it would behoove us to have a brief conversation as, you know, before.
We have a tendency to go long on all of our discussions. As, as the clock indicates tonight. So if we had two shorter ones, it would be so much better.
We could do two things now. We could do the, we, there's, I'm presuming that we're going to continue with the COVID nineteen Friday updates. So do you want to schedule one, we could schedule a board meeting either before or after the COVID nineteen?
That'd be great.
That'd be great.
Either, either the eighth or the fifteenth?
Either.
Fifteen, well.
And then, and then do a formal, then do a formal, a longer study session on the twenty-eighth?
Sure.
Yes, I love it. I love it.
Maybe the eighth, so if we want to make any changes, we're not submitting it on the fifteenth?
And the eighth has the, because on the fifteenth, that's Sherry crunch, that's board crunch time to get all their stuff in so that Sherry can get the agenda punched out. I think the eighth would be better.
May eighth.
Okay, so we'll do a eighth. And I think that, you know, again, I think that we're talking, I think we're talking big picture. I mean, getting our input from the standpoint of where do we, where do we view the priorities? Where, where do we feel that there, you know, there may be some areas, but I think Jeff giving us an idea of, of what the thoughts are as it relates to where there, where there are some pluses out of this horrible mess and where there, and, and, and the usage. And then Russell, you're coming in with some of the, the important needs, the educational needs. And then, of course, you know, Tim, you're going to be coming in with, with the, the facilities needs, you know, because those things continue. I think that those are both important. And then, of course, Leona, we haven't forgotten you and, and our employees. So, so I think that, okay, so we'll schedule a, a, a board meeting, an hour board meeting after the, after the COVID?
An hour? Really? Two hours?
Well, it's just.
I mean, you know us, Martha. You and I could jack up an hour.
But you're, if you're talking, this was going to be the, sort of the brief one and then the long one was going to be on the twenty-eighth. You want a two-hour now?
Why don't we split the difference, ninety minutes?
Okay.
The thing is, if you schedule it for an hour, it'll go for two. If you schedule it for two hours, it'll go for three. So. But I just don't want to have everybody leaving because they've got a meeting after.
Well, I don't know where we're going.
You can take a trip to the front room.
Okay, so, so do we want to, Fred, what time, you have meet, what are your, what do you guys do meeting-wise on the, on the eighth?
We have an eight o'clock. We have you scheduled at nine. We have a twelve fifteen and we have a three o'clock.
Great.
Nine to twelve fifteen.
Okay, so.
And maybe Jeff's.
Eight o'clock, really, you know, it, but it can go, so let's, let's do, we'll do a ten to twelve. But you guys have lunch, right?
We need to go at eleven thirty.
You need to go to eleven thirty, okay. So we'll go from, oh my God, we're going to go.
Eight to eleven thirty.
No, we have an eight o'clock meeting.
Nine till eleven thirty.
We'll do a nine o'clock.
Why don't you work this out with, with Fred? This is.
Yeah, exactly. Well, I'll work it out.
You're not having fun, Karen?
No.
Karen's hungry.
Yeah, we're all hungry. Okay, ready, okay, so we'll schedule one for the eighth and the twenty-sixth.
Okay. Now you know the eighth is just a week away from this Friday.
Yeah. Yeah, that's why, yeah.
Yeah, well, we're just going to talk.
I won't miss or talk for two hours.
I believe we should let the president and the superintendent figure out the timing and all that and get back to us. Do we move on?
Yeah, the only one that has an update, I'm having a special board meeting on CROP on this Thursday to talk, they were going to talk about grading, so I'll report out what we, what we're doing. And Ms. Barto, do you have any legislative update?
I mean, there's so many, but it keeps changing. So I feel like we're good for tonight.
Okay, good. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Will they wait?
Yes, yes.
If we have, should we, I mean, some of the things that I just wanted to put out there for our next meeting is if we can have a plan for summer, like the summer school planning, where we are on that, what we're thinking, some more like, it's almost May. I wanted to update everyone that the hotline number that we have set up is a huge win and they're getting at least one call a day about mental health specifically. So I'm so glad that we're having that because there's, sometimes there's more, but to have someone that is a staff person that is able to talk to students and parents is huge. And the Victoria Elementary website is phenomenal and has tons of resources about distance learning. I would love if every school took ownership of their websites and had all of the distance learning information on there individually. And then I have one last question. Do we have enough hotspots for intervention teachers and others? I've heard specifically at Ray that we have intervention teachers who do not have access and they're, they would be able to do something like SIPs. We, so I want to make sure that we don't have kids falling behind. That's all. Then we can adjourn, just want to get those out there.
I'll second Ashley's.
I think, I think Russell will give us an update this, this Friday. Okay. Did you motion to adjourn?
Ashley did. I seconded it.
And seconded, Ms. Matoye, roll call.
I didn't motion, but I can, that's fine.
Okay, Ms. Anderson, you made the motion, Ms. Matoye seconded, roll call.
Oh, God. Sherry went to bed.
Okay.
Sorry.
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Yelsey?
Yes.
Ms. Black?
Yes.
Ms. Barto?
Yes.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Snell?
Yeah.
Ms. Matoye?
Yes.
Thank you, Sherry.
Hi, everybody.
Good night.
Night.